Board of Trustees for the San Felipe Aduro CISD to order. This meeting will be conducted by video conference in accordance with the Governor's authorization concerning suspension of certain meeting law requirements for COVID-19 coronavirus disaster. Madam Secretary, would you do the honor of calling row? You're muted.
Are you muted now?
You're okay now.
You're muted. Mr. Contreras?
He'll be joining us later.
Okay. Mr. Hathaway?
Ah.
Ms. Sims?
There.
Mr. Mesa?
Here.
Mr. O'Fell?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith will not be with us.
I mean, Mesa, yes. Yes, sir, we have a call.
Let the record show that we do have a quorum of board members since this meeting has been duly called in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. We'll have opening ceremonies first with a moment of silence for personal reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you again. I'm glad to see all of you, and I wish we had the seven board members tonight. I think Mr. Contreras will be joining us later on during the meeting. First item of business we have is recognitions, item 4A, defined arts recognition program. Do we have Dr. Rios? I mean, Ricardo Rios.
Mr. Mesa, Mr. Luna and his staff will be queuing up the presentation.
Okay. Dr. Rios, come here, trust the monitor.
Yes, sir, they're working on it. I think at their end, let's see what we can do here in a minute. Mr. Mesa, that was David, Lisa, and what a... The sound wasn't working really well, but you could tell by the fast motion of his fingers just how incredibly talented the young man is. We're going to see what they can do in the control room for the video, and if they fix it, maybe we can play it again at the end of the meeting. This is the first time we attempt to do something like this. Obviously, it didn't work out quite how we wanted it to. But let's see if we can fix it and play it for y'all again during the meeting.
I think it would be a time worthwhile to see if we could see the whole video along with the audio.
Absolutely. They'll work on it throughout the meeting, and if at any point they inform me that it's ready to go, we'll ask for permission to come back to this item. So if we can just table it out for now.
So the recognition, he's a jazz pianist that went to state?
I don't have his accomplishments on my notes here, but I think the last slide there did indicate something to that effect.
Okay. And sir, I don't have any citizens to be heard, any papers in front of me. Did we not receive any from people that might be interested? No citizens to be heard. Okay. Then we go straight to reports. First item that we have is item 8A, San Felipe Aduro CISD Education Foundation Annual Report. We have Mrs. Sylvia Owens. Welcome. How are you tonight? You're muted.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much for having us, sir, and to the rest of the board. Thank you for having us today. We're going to share an actual report with you, and I kind of want to go over it with you. Let us get you screen shared here in just a few minutes. Give me a sec. Have it for you. We should have it for you in just a second. I believe we got that. Are you able to see that, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So this is our annual 2020 report from the Education Foundation. Obviously, this has been a little bit of a difficult year for us, but we've continued to go strong, and we wanted just to kind of let you know, we did add a few board members since the last time we met, and we wanted to recognize some of those. We've got an incredible team, continues to work very, very well together. So our first slide shows your Education Foundation board members. I don't think it's necessary to go over each name. You've got them in front of you. Many of us have been there for a while, but we did add quite a few, Nancy Rodriguez, Becky West, Maite Casas, George DeLeon, Janie Garcia. Those are some of the newest members, and we're very, very pleased to have them because they're very strong additions to our board. Obviously, our purpose is the same. We established in 2020, and we continue to go strong. Our goal is to recognize educators' initiatives and creativity, and to also recognize our students' achievements and commitment to learning. What we do, we do fundraising, we do our IGTs, or Innovative Teaching Grants, and student scholarships. And we want to kind of go over a little bit of what we've done this year in spite of the special year and the circumstances that we've had. This year, we actually did do 16 scholarships for 2020 high school graduates to the total of 10,500. Well, because of the pandemic, and basically what we tried to do is come up with grants to our teachers that could still be utilized during a pandemic, you know, the remote teaching. So we were able to fund four innovative teaching grants to the total of $6,917.95. We did have some very, very good applicants, and we'll continue to hold on to those. So hopefully, something that we can do in the future if we're able to. Obviously, we want to make sure that if we're funding something, that it can be done in a very safe manner. And so we were very comfortable with four that could possibly be done. One of them went to Ruben Chavita Elementary, Science in a Bag, something that they were going to be sending home, cardio drumming for Garfield Elementary, something that they could actually do while they are social distancing. There was a very, very unique and innovative project that was being done at Dr. Lonnie Green, a positive TV positivity, something that they were going to put together, something very exciting, and we're hoping to see some really good results from that particular grant. And then we also did Life Skills Greenhouse Project for the freshman school. So excited about the four that we did. We wish we could do more, and we will continue to strive to do that if, you know, the circumstances allow. Obviously, we just talked about our COVID. So one of the things that we did, we didn't want to just completely not do something, but we became aware that some of our students would begin, you know, the school year virtually, and we couldn't help but notice that many of them wouldn't have the equipment that they needed in order to do that. So we started an initiative. Many of you have probably already heard about our initiative, but we're very, very happy and excited to let you know that it went very, very well. Our community stepped up. Many of our businesses came together to come up with a plan to provide students with equipment so that they could continue to do their work from home. We actually had 35 sponsors that came up with a total of 80 We actually had 35 sponsors that came up with a total of $82,450 to fund 168 laptops. So 168 laptops will be purchased or have been purchased through this particular project. We will be dividing those and some of them have already been assigned out to the different schools. Basically, they were done by need and also their willingness and ability and their excitement to continue to do their work. So we're very, very excited to have done this for our students and for the district. So $82,450 students that are very, very deserving of the equipment. So these have already been begun to be handed out to these students with very specific letters to what it's supposed to be utilized for and how they're supposed to be using them. And we've asked them to reach out to some of our sponsors and give them a little thank you note, you know, a handwritten note to just show their gratitude for the commitment and the support that we've had from various businesses and individuals from our community. One of the comments that was made earlier today, some of the folks that actually participated in this are not necessarily those that have participated in the past. I believe that what happened is that the community came together and saw a real need and wanted to attend. So we have our typical sponsors that come together for the Dinner on the Creek and the Adventure on the Creek. We had some that came in from outside of that particular group. So we're very, very proud of that and very, very excited to share that with you. So fundraising, while we started beginning our planning for the Dinner on the Creek, obviously, it was scheduled to happen in May and we couldn't have it, but we had some sponsorship money that came in, the tune of $23,250. We did send notice out to all of our sponsors, allowing them to choose whether they wanted to have that money refunded to them or they wanted it to apply to the next year's Adventure on the Creek or Dinner on the Creek or whether they wanted just to leave it there. And the majority of those folks came back and said, "We don't want our money. We don't care what you do. Go ahead and keep it. We know it's for a good cause." So we were able to keep $23,250 of the sponsorship money that was given towards the Dinner on the Creek that we had to cancel this year. Adventure on the Creek, obviously, we weren't able to do that. That's something that we had started last year. This year wasn't going to happen. Usually, we had planned on having that during, you know, the summer, beginning of the year, not something that we could do safely this year. We're looking forward to possibly planning that for next year. Again, our laptop initiative, $82,450 for a total revenue that we collected of $105,700. When we talk about our expenses, we did give that $6,917.95 in those four grants that we talked about. We gave out $10,500. And in scholarships this year to students, about $1,600, Teacher of the Year Awards, and $70,121 is how much we've spent so far. We have about $12,000 additional money that we are going to be purchasing and extending out to get those laptops the remainder. That was, that in and of itself was not an easy task. Laptops are hard to find these days. Everybody's looking for those. And so I believe Dr. Rios and Les and Sandra and everybody did a really, really fine job of finding resources to actually purchase those. Assets as of, and actually that says 2019, excuse us, that should be November 1st, 2020, or as of today. We had $74,171.07 at Texas Community Bank and $35,083.47 at the Bank and Trust for a total asset of $109,244.54. Very proud to tell you that our foundation is striving. It's going very well. We want to offer our heartfelt gratitude to every single sponsor that... Okay, sorry, little technical thing here. To all our sponsors for their kindness and generosity on each donation, not just this year, but every single year, together, we've made significant impacts in the lives of our teachers and our children. And your partnership as a board and your support and generosity has also impaired us to make a meaningful difference to all our students and the teachers that we serve. So we're very, very happy to bring this to you this year. We continue to come up with ideas and we're always open to suggestions. So if the board ever decides there's something that you would like for us to focus on, please do not hesitate to bring that to our attention. I will open it up for any questions if y'all have.
I just wanted to say thank you again for the work that you do as the leader of that great organization. And yes, it's been quite a different year because normally the highlights for us is graduation and then teacher convocation where, you know, Mrs. Diana Gonzalez sings her heart out to the teachers and we send out our messages to the start of the year. But you do a lot of work in between the year and I think such a worthy cause to buy, again, the instruments for the young students that do not have a device for connectivity and the instruction. So it has not been the normal year and yet you came through with such a huge amount from the sponsors. We're grateful to everyone for the work that everybody does. And, you know, we could not have the enthusiasm. And I noticed like during the teacher convocation how teachers compete from, you know, different schools for the projects that are ongoing. And the ultimate goal is yet the students are going to learn, whether it's a riding project or whether it's fishing on the creek or I've seen the different programs that they have and now, you know, the greenhouse and it's a learning activity for them. And so it enriches the program that we already have above and beyond. I'm going to open it up to board members to again share with our thoughts. Mrs. Webb?
Just want to say Sylvia, thank you so much and the committee for everything that you all are doing. In spite of everything that's going on, you still come together as a group to help our students. So thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you and thank all of your committee members and the community that has donated so much for the school district.
Thank you. It is a complete team effort. The group is outstanding. It's really easy when you have such a strong and enthusiastic group to work with. And Dr. Rios and Sandra play a very, very large role in that. So kudos to them for their input. They do amazing too.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mesa, thank you very much for everything y'all do. It's been an amazing organization since the time we created it several years ago. Especially during this time and helping with the laptops. We greatly appreciate the community and our children greatly appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. Anyone else? Thank you again for being here and you're always welcome.
Thank you so much. Y'all have a great evening.
You too. Next report that we have is item 8B, Air Evac Update, Ade Garcia. And I don't know why we have Michael Keaton here. He's been gone out of the community for about a year or so.
He's a, he'll be joining and making the presentation though. He still heads up that organization.
He's still in Doria?
He comes and goes, but he still works for the same company.
Okay.
Okay, good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. Let me just get the presentation up here.
Hello, Mr. Keaton. You're muted.
You're muted, Michael.
All right. Sorry about that. I typically use Microsoft Teams, so Zoom's a little new to me. How y'all doing?
Fine, how are you?
Good, good, good.
Michael, I was going to key up the presentation and then she'll be controlling the slides and you can start presenting as soon as Mr. Mesa is ready for us.
Sure, not a problem.
Okay, I think you can see it there, right?
Now we can.
Yes.
Okay, so we can go.
Okay, everybody's in attendance then?
Yes.
Okay, good. Just, you know, first of all, I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity to allow me to actually reach out and address any concerns or questions that you guys may have. You know, it's an endless opportunity for us or endless task for us to continue to educate the community and the entities down there that in the Valverde County about what our site plan does and how much it's valuable, how valuable it is for the community. So I just want to start off by saying that my background really quick is, you know, and I've got friends and family there in Del Rio, but my background is I spent the last 10, 10 years in Del Rio. My kids graduated from Del Rio High School, played football, so I'm vested in that community. Currently live in San Antonio as a senior program director for Air Evac Life Team, which is an air medical provider, the largest in the country. But I'm vested in my heart, my family, everything still belongs to Del Rio, which is why this is really important to me. I'm on the operations side and not the membership side, but because I've got good, strong relationships and I understand the program very well, they've allowed me the opportunity to go and speak to you guys and kind of explain what's going on here. So let's just start by saying that this is a traditional municipal site plan. It covers the entire county of Valverde and that includes every resident that lives in the county. This plan is specific to where there's four entities in that county that have come together to actually contribute to the payment of this, of this, which is going to include the county, the city, the school district, and the hospital. And we'll get into those numbers a little bit later in a few more slides and kind of break down what it is, what their portion is, how much they pay or they have been paid traditionally annually and what the increase that they've experienced as well. So we can go to the next slide now. Just so you know, it does cover every permanent resident. There is a zero out of pocket for those residents that have insurance. And for those residents that do not have insurance, the law, currently the law does not allow us to forgive any debt incurred or expense incurred just because you don't have insurance. And so we actually have to bill you the Medicaid allowable rate, which is a formula that's given to us by the law. To offset that, any resident that actually doesn't have insurance, we promote them or we ask them to go ahead and pay that $35 or $45 upgrade fee. And what that does is that once we got them in the system and they've upgraded, then the fact that they actually have no insurance coverage means nothing to us. And what we do is we go and offset that and we write off that balance. So we want, we want the committee members of Valverde that do not have insurance to go ahead and upgrade their plan. And that's on us to actually get that information out there. We have been since 2016. We've been trying to get that information out there so that everybody understands that. As a resident of Valverde County, you yourself can also upgrade at any point, which will cover you outside of the county of Valverde. Granted, these prices are typically $85 if you're not part of a site plan like all the residents there are. If you're a senior citizen, it's 35 and if you're a non-senior citizen, it's 45. That's the discounted rate for being a part of this plan. And regardless of how many people actually live in the residence as well, I mean, it does cover students who are away in college who utilize your residence as a primary residence. They're also covered up to the age 26. And you could have, you know, five kids, you can have 10 kids. Everybody that resides in that household has permanent residence in the household is actually covered under that one-time fee. And for the municipal site plan, what you guys contribute, what you guys are purchasing is that basic plan for every resident in Valverde County. AMR Care Network, AMCM, which is abbreviation for it. We're the ones that are responsible for the advertising, for creating awareness, reaching out to the local medias and trying to get that word out there. We do that continuously through advertisement, through mailers. I think three or four weeks ago, we actually sent a mailer out to every household. We also like to partner with the entities so that we can hold events. And there's a slide that actually has events that we've held throughout the county. Obviously, COVID has put a damper and all that, so it's difficult for us to actually get in front of the community. But we're still, we're doing the media, we're doing the advertisement, we're doing what we can to actually get that word out there. Community benefits, it reduces the final, the financial stresses off the residents. It removes the high cost variable from transports. So typically, what we normally would bill, and it's all variable based on mileage and based on medical care given, but if you run anywhere from $20,000 up to $50,000 up to $60,000 per flight. And being a part of this site plan, what we actually do is we bill the insurance. And in this case, you guys are self-insured. Whatever the insurance sends us, we consider that paid in full and the remainder of the amount is written off. So that, that amount actually is, you can look at it as potential income that actually stays within this county of Valverde and doesn't go off to a bill collector, doesn't go off to an entity that's just providing emergency medical services such as ourselves. So we'll get into the number a little bit later as far as how much actually was written off for the 2020 year. Money spent with the local businesses and not being sent out of state for an air ambulance bill potentially helps with reimbursement for local healthcare providers. And this is a great amenity that can be used to attract additional businesses and new residents. So the fact that you guys have a air medical transport there in Valverde County is huge for businesses that wanting to bring in, whether it be industrial, small commercial, large commercial. I can tell you that the hospital does vet some of those types of questions. The businesses are actually looking at the county and whether or not they can support that type of care from a rural community over to a tertiary or a level one or level two trauma center in San Antonio. Looking at some of the data that we have for you, we started February 2016. We completed 256 flights. At that year, we wrote off $471,987. As you can see, every year, we've actually increased our flights and the amount that we've had to write off has absolutely increased. The operational costs has increased. COVID has increased our flight volume as well. And so with more flight volume, there's some more cost that we're going to have to write off. The 2000, if you go down to 2019, we completed 293 flights from the, from Valverde County. This includes motor vehicle accidents where we go to the scene and interfacility transfers where we pick up from the hospital, transport to San Antonio or to San Angelo. In 2020, you can see that the membership write-off is actually 3.9. So we had a $1 million increase in write-offs from 2019 to 2020. Now, COVID does have a lot to do with that. There's been a large amount, an increased amount of flight volume just because of COVID alone. So just because of that, there has to be some kind of offset attempt on our part to try to, to try to offset that operating expense and try to bring that up. So, which is what brings you up to what, what we're actually presenting to you now. We do this on an annual basis. In 2016, we started off at $135,000, shared between all entities and gradually it's increased to 2017, 2019 for a two-year period. It actually stayed the same. That was a 5% increase from 2019, 2018, 2019, we actually increased it 8.3. And this, now that you're seeing this increase that we're seeing here, which for you guys, the actual dollar amount is going to be a total of $13,129 increase from last year. That's a, we got a 20% increase there. And it may seem like a lot individually and I can tell you that across the border, it was a 20% increase and all the entities have actually bumped up. All four entities have been presented to this increase. Three of them have already approved it. We spoke to city council. The hospital has approved it and the county has approved it. So you guys are actually the last entity to vote on this. I can also tell you that we are in the month that it actually does expire. I believe today, 2000, I'm sorry, October 19th is the expiration date. I don't have it on in front of me right now, but I think today is the actual expiration date. However, being that we are communicating in good faith and you guys are actively trying to get this done, we're willing to have a grace period to actually allow you to do the vetting process and make that decision. So we, so you guys actually don't, we don't lapse on this agreement. Here's what's important to understand about the agreement though. It's in place. We don't offer this kind of site plan throughout our footprint anymore. And that's because we've realized that the operating expenses and it's not, it's not a plan that we're offering because it does affect our bottom line as well and we have to be able to make ends meet in order to operate. So if we were happen to not renew this program, it will not be offered to us again in this county. What does that mean? That means that the flights going from Valverde County to San Antonio are not going to stop. People still need to get to their higher healthcare and, you know, traumas and illnesses are still going to happen and the air medical transport companies have a dire need to assist. And that's going to continue happening without this plan in place. That just means that we've got to resort to what our fundamental billing practices is that we're going to bill the actual employee or the actual family member and they're going to be on the hook for that. And that's what we're trying to avoid through the site plan is that let us continue this partnership with you guys, therefore minimizing the expense that's actually going to be portrayed on patients or the patient family by us having it writing off because you guys participate in this type of partnership with us. This is some of the public awareness efforts that we do throughout the county. We've got special events that we show up, we show up at the booth and we try to educate. We try to get people to, to upgrade their, their basic membership. We send out brochures, flyers. We have independent reps, which are community members there in the city that actually can sell the upgrades as well. Anybody, everybody's welcome to actually go to the, to the local helicopter station or helicopter base and they can give you a tour and they can also... and they can give you a tour and they can also sign you up. We do run some ads in, in Del Rio. And now we've actually had some advertisements, some advertisements come out with the local radio stations as well. So we, we, we want to do what we can to actually get the word out there. And we understand it's a never-ending task of educating the community and, and the decision makers. This is kind of a footprint of what, what we cover right now in the United States and that it's actually grown since then. So as you can see, we have a large presence in Texas. And if you want to go to the next one, kind of talk a little bit about how it's affected you guys. If you can see in the year two thousand seventeen, you guys, what we were able to do is attribute eight flights that were flown out of the county that was correlated to the insurance that you currently had at that time. And there's a payment amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. I think the difference there, the reason there's a huge decrease in expense on y'all's end is that you guys, since you guys are self-insured, I believe there was a review on your end. And there was an amount or cap that you guys set for your, for your reimbursement on those types of expenses. And that was presented to us and obviously we accepted that. And so that's why there's a, there's a decrease in that. And since two thousand eighteen, that's, that's the amount that we've been accepting. In two thousand twenty, now we do have a discrepancy in one flight that occurred within this last year that we're currently working through to try to find out what was the, the cause of you guys actually paying eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five for one flight. If it's, if we're wrong on our end, then we'll do what we got to do to correct that. But that's, that's beyond me, that's, I think, Ms. Garcia, Ms. Garcia has more information or she can bring you guys more up to speed on that specific incident.
Hi, I'm sorry, yes, our insurance company paid, it paid on that and we're trying to find out why they paid that whole amount. But it was eighty-six thousand dollars for one flight. So that is a good point to look at. A flight can be up to eighty-six thousand dollars and we're supposed to pay only ten thousand dollars per flight.
That's, that's a huge write-off on our end. And so we take that, that amount and we, we're still going to bill it out. It's still data that we've got to collect, but we consider it paid in full once the insurance company actually pays it. So we're actually not, we're not actively looking to recover any of that write-off from, from your, from your eight entity or, or from your actual employer, employee family. So it's, it's a complete write-off and that only is in place because of the agreement that, that you guys have come up with. Any questions? Go ahead.
Mike, Mike, as you all know, you know, this has been a very difficult year. We are going to expect a shortfall in funds. But I still have a question regarding that last statement that, you know, we were billed the whole amount. But I need to get to the bottom of that. But, but I wanted to just let you know is that I checked around, you know, Uvalde doesn't pay anything for school employees. Eagle Pass doesn't pay anything for school employees. Laredo doesn't pay anything. Now, we understand Comstock is small, but you know, when we're looking at insurance premiums going up for employees and that big, you know, we were able to help out the employees this year. But when we look at the coming year, we know that we're going to have to pass that cost on to the employees. And that's just one area of many other areas. You know, we keep hearing furloughing employees and we have loyalty to our employees more so than Valverde Regional Medical. But we're looking at everything where we can cut costs and still have the privilege of being air, you know, evacuated in, in case of an emergency. I mean, that's crucial to our employees. But I still haven't done an answer why we were billed the whole amount, even though we signed up. You know, we were billed the whole amount on the last patient that was airlifted.
Correct, and I completely understand your concern there. I can tell you that we are always going to send an invoice for the entire amount. We're always going to bill the entire amount. And then it's up to the insurance agency to reimburse us, whatever, reimburse us whatever negotiated rate or whatever contract they may have on file. So the way it works is if we bill you the eighty-six thousand, you're only supposed to spend us ten, ten, send us ten thousand dollars, then that's when we're able to refer back to the contracts that we have in place and say the seventy-six thousand dollars needs to be categorized as a write-off because we're under this agreement. Now, if we just bill you that ten thousand dollars, we're not collecting the data the way it needs to be. So I can tell you that if, if your, if your insurance company paid eighty-six thousand and you stayed, and that's something that, that we can work to figure out, then that's, that's not going to be a problem for us to reverse whatever it is that, that we need to reverse there. We just got to make sure that that's, that's something that we can actually have open that dialogue and, and move forward and prevent from happening again. I, I can tell you that we didn't, if, if we did send an eighty-six thousand dollar bill and you guys denied it at first and sent us ten, we weren't going back after you for the additional seventy-six and, and ended up recovering. It didn't, doesn't work like that because you guys are under the agreement. It's, we sent the bill for eighty-six thousand dollars and we received reimbursement for eighty-six thousand dollars. Now, that's, that's a conversation that needs to happen on the insurance part as to why that slipped through the crack. But we'll, we'll do whatever we can on our part to prevent it from happening again and to help work with that specific situation. Now, I can't answer much about it because I don't know all of the details and it's obviously something that, I don't have access to that, that type of information.
Mike, I appreciate the information you gave us. And I'm going to turn it over to other board members, but do you all offer the same service to Uvalde, Eagle Pass, Laredo?
Absolutely. Well, I can tell you that Kenny County actually does have a municipal site plan with us as well. Frio County has one, we've got some other ones within South Texas. But the service where we have a specific air medical base, we've got one in Corizo Springs, Eagle Pass, Del Rio, Pierceall and Laredo. Those are the bases that actually I'm the senior program director for. And I can tell you that the, the site plan that means a lot to us and has the most coverage is going to be there in Valverde County since we're not offering this anymore. If the way it works with those individuals or those counties that actually don't have this agreement is that we actually do bill their insurance company and they reimburse us whatever it is that the allotment is for that or negotiator. I can say that we did go in negotiations, that we have come to an agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas. We went to these in, in network agreements with many of the large insurance companies. And for those individuals that don't have insurance, then we have to bill them what the law tells us to bill them, which is a fluctuating formula on a daily rate based on the mileage and the medical caregiving. So yes, this service is provided, there's, there's not one side of Texas that's going to get it cheaper than the other. It, it just, it depends on the mileage, the medical care and what, and we have to remain compliant with the, the medical billing laws that are in place within the state of Texas and federally.
I, I hope you understand my thinking here that, you know, if, let's say that our three employees that were airlifted, you know, we can recover the amount that we spent. But when we talk about furloughing twenty, twenty-five people, you know, that, that makes a big difference because we're trying to save our employees from losing their job. And so we're looking at everything that we can to tighten our belt for our coming budget for the coming year. And so we're looking very carefully at every item, not just this one. And, and that's a rationale for that. But I want to turn it over to the board members to see if they have any questions. Mr. Orfield?
I know on the map you showed, it, it looked like outlier areas of, of New Mexico. So as an example, if someone here upgrades, a senior citizen upgrades for a thirty-five dollar membership and they are in New Mexico, are you partnered with a group in New Mexico that they have to be airlifted out of an area in New Mexico that this falls under or is just strictly Valverde County with that membership?
And that's a good question. To clarify, that is, is the municipal site plan that's currently in place and that we're asking you to continue will only cover you in the county of Valverde. Meaning any flight that originates within that county and you are a resident of that county, that's where this agreement is going to take place. The upgrade is what we're asking everybody to do and everybody's eligible for an upgrade that lives in the county. For, if you're a senior citizen, it's thirty-five. If you're a non-senior citizen, it's forty-five dollars. That will cover you outside of the county and the entire, the rest of the United States. It is not an international coverage, so you can go Bahamas, Jamaica and such should be covered as well. Now, the caveat is that it's got to be a in-network air medical helicopter that picks you up. And we have three hundred and sixty-seven helicopters in the United States. We do have some in New Mexico. We, we saturate the state of Texas, we saturate a lot of the Midwest, even California. We've got a lot of helicopters. I cannot guarantee, we can't guarantee it's going to be our helicopter that's going to be picking you up. So it's hard for us to tell you that every helicopter is going to be covered. But that's where we do our best in partnering and building relationships with the local EMS and, and giving them that information to know that their residents are covered for this specific aircraft. And if that aircraft is the closest helicopter, then it needs to be utilized. Because the way we see it, regardless of the color or the owner of that company, we have to be alive in order to be convenient by that medical bill. So let's throw the finances out and let's get that air medical helicopter there as fast as possible. Let's get them to a life-saving procedure as fast as possible. But we do, do our best to saturate our, our areas and to educate our, our, our partners and our, our relationships with our EMS agencies as to where our aircraft are located and whether or not there's a site plan in place. I can tell you that we've done a really good job in the counties that surround Valverde to emphasize that these residents have a county-wide site plan and it behooves them to utilize the air medical helicopter that currently exists in Del Rio because it is the fastest and the closest one to them. And then we've got additional aircraft that surround Del Rio that can come in and assist.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Whit? You're muted.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
We only have three employees that use the service this year and three that used it last year, correct?
Well, we, we say employees, but it could also be a family member linked to your insurance, your employee insurance.
Okay, but it was three last year and three this year?
Uh, that is correct, that's what we show. And it, and it's been difficult to actually identify them because when we, when, when we try to run those numbers, your insurance company could be paying for somebody that, for whatever reason, we can't identify as a link back to you, to your, your school district.
So I guess my question is, if we are, or there is an increase of over thirteen thousand and there was only three employees or three family members in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, yet the city and the county have over three hundred and nine, what increase did they get on their end if we're getting an increase in the district for thirteen thousand or over thirteen thousand?
So I can tell you that every entity, and this goes back to when the agreement was first drafted, every entity has a certain percentage that they are responsible for on the final amount. And it's going to be based off their tax or their tax base with the school district having the largest tax base. Took a brunt of what, what it is that is owed as far as the other entities, I can tell you. Just, just so you know, there's been a, almost six thousand dollar increase from the hospital, a fifty-three hundred dollar increase from the county and a fifty-three hundred dollar increase from the city of Del Rio. And that's because of the tax base. You guys collect forty-four percent, the hospital collects twenty percent, county eighteen and hospital eighteen percent. So it's all based off that. And I think Dr. Rios can actually enlighten us a little bit more on that decision-making when it was finally drafted.
And my other question is, you said that there had to be communication between the insurance, the district insurance, and I'm assuming your company or the company regarding the eighty-six thousand that was charged. How long does that take for that conversation and communication to take place before something is, is corrected?
So I can tell you that I don't know, Ms. Garcia, and maybe you can correct me here, but eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-five dollars, in, in my opinion and what I'm looking at here without looking at the actual flights and such is, is, is from three flights. How much of it is per each flight is, is, is information I don't have in front of me? I think that's what we're trying to figure out. Is, did it come from a specific flight? Because we have three documented flights that actually occurred. So eighty-six thousand is not from a single flight. It could be eighty thousand from a single flight and the rest is from the other two flights. We don't know, we're trying to get that down to that. But I can, I can tell you that the communication when it's brought to our attention and, and it's this contract negotiation or this presentation that's just happened in the last few weeks has brought this issue to light as to, hey, why do we have only three flights and it's eighty-six thousand as opposed to last year it was three flights and it was twenty-eight thousand? And so now we're digging into it, we're trying to figure out what's going on. I don't know the progress you guys have on your end and I don't have access to the financials on our end when it comes to billing. That's something that somebody else needs to get involved with that conversation.
Thank you.
Dr. Rios? At, at the end of the day, what their company builds this year is no different than what they built last year. The problem is that at our end, at our insurance end, that they, for whatever reason, paid the full amount when they should have only paid the amount that was, that, that's outlined in our, in our handbook. So Ms. Garcia has been working with our insurance end so that they can request a refund of, of the problem. So I'm not advocating for you to approve or, or disapprove of the recommendation. I'm just clarifying that what AirMed bill does is no different than what they would have billed us on any other year. It's what our insurance chose to pay. So that problem is, is on our insurance end and, and Ms. Garcia needs to stay on top of them and not let them off the hook so they can request a, a, a refund. The last communication that we had with the insurance, Ms. Garcia specifically asked them if they wanted AirMed to file the claim again. And they said that it wasn't necessary, that they, they got to do the research at their end. So unfortunately, you know, we talk to Mr. Keaton very often and their people, but the problem isn't with them, the problem is with our insurance, our insurance administrators, they're, they're the ones that have to fix it.
Dr. Rios, no fault of Mr. Keaton, but two years ago I questioned an amount and even last year where we were billed not from AirMed, but from Valverde Regional. The amount was three times larger than what it was the previous year. I never got a response, never got a response from that. So I don't want to go through something like this again until I get the whole information. No, you know, I'm not talking about the air, air met, you know, air vac program, but you know, we, we're scrutinizing the expenses and, and I didn't get a good response back then. And so this is why all the questions again about, you know, the eighty-six thousand. But I can understand that insurance, if they pay ten thousand, then that's what they pay. And, and the other question, item that, that I had questioned, it was related to insurance and they didn't catch it until, you know, we paid that amount. So that's why we're scrutinizing the expenses that we're billed for in more detail. I hope you can understand, Mr. Keaton.
Oh, absolutely. I completely understand. At the end of the, at the end of the day, you guys have a bottom line in, in order to succeed and to continue teaching our, our kids of that community. So I completely understand, you've got a budget and you've got to stick to it and you've got to do what you've got to do to reduce expenses. And because I manage budgets as well and I can, I can relate to that. I can tell you though, that this is a need that that community must have, which is the, the, the critical care transport to a, a facility in San Antonio. And whether this agreement is in place or not, you're still going to be able to provide that. It, it's just that the expense for that will be distributed a lot differently than the way it is now. I believe the way it is now is very successful. And we, we don't have a lot of complaints about it or a lot of people up in arms because of this agreement. And, and it's regardless of the company. I'm not just saying because it's my company, but this is, medical billing is a complex animal that is discussed in great length throughout our entire country and many different levels. And we just so happen, it's just an industry, industry that we're in. So we want to do what we can to help the, the community understand how important it is. We want to stay there, we, we don't plan on going anywhere, it's, it's a forever home for us. And just, just so you know, so we're clear, we're, we're an agency or an entity that resides at the hospital and hospital property, but we're still separated from the hospital. We are our own company, we're not, we have a partnership with the hospital, but we're not in no way managed or owned by the hospital at all. This is just a, an opportunity for us to inhabit a space there at the hospital. And we've done a good job in trying to have good relationships with the hospital and the community, so we want to continue that. trying to have good relationships with the hospital and the community, so we want to continue that.
Sure. Anyone else with a question or vendors? Ms. Gonzalez?
Yeah, Dr. Rios.
Yes, ma'am.
Does the insurance, aren't the school district insurance paid for and for air lifting expenses?
Yes, ma'am. And just to 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 clarify, uh if we if we're not part of this agreement, the school district will still continue to pay the allowable expense, which is right about ten thousand dollars. But in every one of those cases, the whole bill, whether it's eighty-six thousand or fifty-six thousand, whatever AirMed charged is only gonna pay the ten thousand dollars per flight. But the rest of that expense is gonna be passed on to each one of our employees. So so this year, if we have three flights and we should have paid ten thousand for each flight, the other fifty thousand would have been uh billed to our employees, and then they have to pay the difference. Now, in previous years, we've had eight flights. So that means that eight of our employees would have had to pay uh the entire difference of what was what was billed. Um so at the end of the day, the district won't have an increased expense, but the expense will definitely be passed on to our employees uh and the rest of the community, but obviously right now we're only talking about our employees. That's why we recommended approval on it, because even if we pay seventy thousand dollars uh on our behalf, just the savings that's passed on to our employees is well above the amount that we pay in the insurance. Now, obviously, we wouldn't have any flights. Well, then obviously there wouldn't be any savings passed on. But in the past three years, four years, we've had at least three flights uh per year. This year, given COVID, we're blessed that our employees or the dependents have only had three flights, but still that savings, uh what I'm calling the savings and 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 what Michael Keaton's company is calling a write-off is the same thing. It's it's larger than the amount we paid. Uh so in essence, we're helping our employees out above and beyond that, uh or at least those employees who who have had to be flown out.
And it's potentially money, you know, revenue that stays in that community and is not being collected by our company, which is a good key point that we like to make, is that that write-off or that savings on your end is is money that stays in your community. Uh and and just just note that 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 number three for twenty-twenty is year-to-date, and we still got a few more months. It may be it may be two or three more flights, or it may stay at three, hopefully. Uh but just it's 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 a number that we'll be able to give you a little bit more accurate at the end of the year as to how many actually were transported for the year.
Uh if the school district bails out of this?
I'm sorry?
If the school district decides to get out of this, bail out, get a helicopter, what's gonna happen to the other the other people? They're gonna wait to go up or?
So if the school district decides to to not continue this agreement, um there will be a uh a conversation that will have to occur with the other three entities to see if they want to cover that cost, and if they refuse to cover that cost, uh then this agreement will be null and void and it'll it'll lapse. At that point, uh we will we will resort to our billing practices, our normal allowable billing practices, which is uh billing the 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 full amount for every patient transport flight. Um and trying to obtain reimbursement from the medical insurance, and then after that, the employee or the the resident, which is which is normal practice. And and it will never be offered. It it's a program that has ended and it will not be offered uh to a community uh anymore, at least not with the verbiage that it contains right now. It's uh we've got something that um that's got a lot more securities in place for for the company, just as far as write-offs and such like that, but what you guys have right now is actually a a big win for for your community and and not of dollars that we actually write off.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure, not a problem. Um and then, Ms. Garcia, if you can just reach out to me with any further questions or concerns. And then, you know, today's what, October nineteenth? Um I could speak on on your behalf and and try to request an extension. I will request an extension through the end of the month, just to see where where we end up um after that, and then I think conversation needs to start happening as to whether or not this is gonna be an agreement that continues. But but please reach out to us. We're willing to help out in any way we can.
Thank you.
Stop by and visit when you're in Del Rio.
I was just there a few days ago, but it literally was in and out, and I keep I keep promising people to take them to lunch.
Dr. Rios started bicycling too, so.
Yeah. All right, we'll see you guys. Take care. Bye-bye.
Okay, next item that we have is uh stolen reports, item eight C, taxable property update, Amy Childress, and do we have Mrs. Shu here with us? No?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Hello?
Hi, how are y'all?
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
School board members, Dr. Rios, how are y'all doing?
We're doing okay.
Good, good. Um I understand you want me to bring you up to date a little bit on some values. Um you ready for me to start?
Yes, I'm ready.
Okay, you know, your your biggest increase was in the J-six category, which is the pipelines. Um that was due to you had one new well. Um it was called the CAC. The uh Cactus Pipeline. And um that's where you got like a hundred and sixteen million dollars just off that one pipeline. And then the other two had some increase. I visited with the Capital Appraisal Group. That is now who does our minerals, utilities and pipelines. She was telling me there's probably gonna be about a five million dollar decrease just from depreciation alone. And, you know, also what comes into play is how much they're using that line, how much is flowing through it. And of course, you know, right now, things are kind of down. They're laying off the uh gas people and and oil people, so things have slowed down quite a bit, so she's not really expecting any kind of increase in that. And then when she checked with the Railroad Commission, there's not anything showing for any new pipelines coming in at this time. So for twenty-twenty-one, they're not thinking you're gonna see any kind of a gain at all at this point. Now, residential-wise, you know, we do still have houses being constructed. Um I have been fortunate enough to um get sales. That's what caused that line item increase was getting the sales information I need. Um as y'all know, I do not get anything from the realtors in this town. I do not get the multiple listing report. So I have to rely on the taxpayers. I send out sales letters to them, and I have to rely on them to send them back. It's not mandatory, of course. So I don't get a lot of of information, but um this year it's looking promising. I am getting a lot of information on the houses. Of course, that's not going to be anything like our pipelines. Um you know, you can expect a ten percent increase on stuff like that. Um commercially, I think y'all have noticed, nothing commercially is going on around town. Um the Walgreens is what they're doing, and as you can see, it's just going to be something very small. It looks like just maybe a pharmacy. It's not gonna be the big Walgreens like Uvalde has. Um so commercially, you're not gonna see a lot of increase either, unfortunately. Um I'm not having very much good news for tonight. Um is there any questions on any other kind of the values?
Mrs. Shu, um I do follow um with, I know the original value that you gave us was preliminary, because you still were doing the the um appeals. And so what is the final amount? Is that the one we're seeing right now?
Right, um your September values, that's the the amounts that you got certified, because uh legislators came up with a new thing where if we're not at our at least, we can, we can't certify if we don't have five percent or less still under review of value. And legislators came up with a new law. If we don't have that five percent, we provide what's called certified estimates in July, when you'd normally get your certified values. So that's what you got this year. And then we were finally able to certify in September, and then I give you certified values. Now, you do still have, it's approximately one point five seven percent still under review. That's uh if you want to talk uh numbers, that's around two hundred and eighty accounts out of our approximately thirty-nine thousand accounts that we have in Valverde County. Half of those are represented by a local uh tax agent. We have reached out to that agent, trying to talk to him about them, and we cannot get hold of him. He will not return our phone calls. And now tax bills have gone out, the uh taxpayers calling us is upset, because they can't get their agent either, talk to him about why he hasn't done anything on the accounts. Um we're giving them, they can revoke him as their, and we can go ahead and talk to them and get some things on these. We are all going to have some hearings on November ninth and in December. So we're hoping that a majority of these two hundred and eighty are settled for the end of the year.
So again, um final amount was failed by fifty-six thousand um fifty-six million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty-four.
On your net taxable before you add in your freeze adjustments. That's correct.
And you said that that new pipeline, is that the one that's just being constructed in Valverde County?
No, when they're being constructed, they're only put on at about fifty percent. They don't really see your big value like you saw until they actually start utilizing them.
Okay.
And the the these pipes are coming out of Reeves County all the way through Valverde, so um they were actually being utilized. That's why you saw that big increase.
So it it is in Valverde County, it's on my road.
Right.
So eventually it'll end up where we will receive some additional monies.
Depending on how much they use it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Questions from the boards? I can't see everyone. Dr. Rios, do you see any hands raised? I can't see.
I'm sorry, I scanned it. Nobody raised their hands.
Okay. I can't get her.
Anytime. Thank you. Y'all take care.
Now, again, continue with reports. Now, this is AD twenty-nine point twenty and twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-one updates, Amy Childress.
Good evening, President. Dr. Rios, members of the board. This evening, we would like to update you on some revenue projections um beginning for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty year that just ended. Uh TEA has put out their near-final summary of finances, and so we would just do um go over that with you. Okay, so on this first screen, this first section, the on August twenty, we brought to the board our projected financial activity for the year ending um August twenty-seventh of two thousand twenty. And at that time, we had projected our revenue activity would be one hundred and one million, one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. At this time, we are projecting that that activity is actually going to be ninety-eight million, one hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars, which is a difference of two point million dollars. That difference is made up, major that is of a decrease. Now, two point six million was the ESTER funds that we are having to remove from our general fund, both in revenue and expenses. Now, if you'll recall, they moved that money that's coming from the federal government. We did move the revenue and those expenses to a different fund, a federal grant fund. In addition, we also, um our comp ed allotment, we had projected to receive about a half million dollars, and it are, it actually came in, TEA is funding us at a little over eleven million dollars. So that uh counted for a million and a half uh drop in our revenue. But we did have some additional additions. It's uh some of our local taxes, of course, you know, TRS. We had some state revenue matching for our bulk computer orders that had been um but for the year, it did bring us down in revenue to point nine million dollars. Now, I also want to make a statement that, of course, these are not all figures. This is just our activity that has posted so far. So on our expenses, we have projected that our expenses would come in at one hundred and eight hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars. And for the year, at this time, we are actually showing this is at ninety-nine million, one hundred and four thirty-nine dollars. This is a um point seven million dollars now uh difference from what we originally predicted. This does take into effect again the two point six million in expenses that we had to remove at ESTER. In addition, we had about eight hundred thousand dollars in expenses that came in, I don't want to say last minute, but we had some we had some payroll adjustments that had to be done. We also had uh invoices that uh came in at the last minute and were paid out of the nineteen-twenty funds. So all in all, it brings us to a cha- a net change of revenue over expenses of one point one, one million, one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. We had originally projected a um oh, sorry. I'm sorry, you can't see the screen. Originally projected in an estimated in balance of thirty million, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars due to these changes. We're estimating, men with an estimated fund balance of twenty-nine million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand and eleven dollars. So that is our update for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. Done. Uh to update you at time on our two thousand twenty-two and twenty-one revenue projection, now that the first six has ended. So our whole budget actions uh were put together using ADA by of NISIN for forty-seven and five. But uh this projected given standing of sixty million, thirty-two hundred and dollars. First six weeks completed, our ADA came in eight seven nine seven point two. TEA has calculated a whole harmless ADA for each district. Ours is nine thousand, three sixty-nine, eight eight three that they are allowing us to use for the first three, six-week periods. If our actual six-week ADA amounts come in less than our whole harmless amount, then we are allowed to use that amount in its place. So in taking our whole harmless amount for the first three, six weeks, and then using the projected eighty-nine seventy for the remainder year, our current plan ADA averages to nine thousand, one seventy point zero four two. So this is going to, at this time, you're projecting a change in state revenue of one million, nine hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, a reduction in our state funding.
Mr. Messa?
Yes, okay.
If I if I uh just just to clarify for any board member or anybody watching, this one point nine million reduction is for the current budget year we're in. The previous slide- The previous slide that Amy shared with us, that's how we ended up the last school year, which will be audited here at the end of this year. And that's why she said those, that's un- un-audited. But we expect for, uh, the fund balance to be decreased by one million dollars, approximately one million dollars from last year's budget. Now, this year's budget, we're just based on the calculations. We're expecting to see a shortfall of one point nine million dollars this current budget year. Yeah, I just didn't want y'all confusing both of them. The previous slide was last year, the slide in front of us is this year. And now we're going to show you how we're going to make up that difference.
The only thing is, let me ask you a question here because, um, when are we going to realize the recovery of the wire fraud money?
Yeah, that, that money, Mr. Mesa, uh, should happen, uh, this current budget year. Uh, but our attorneys can't do anything about it. It's when the court decides to, to, to hear, to have that hearing. And when the F B I decides to have, uh, uh, to, to finish that review. So, so half of them, not half of the money, less than half of the money is in the, is, was with the F B I. I believe the U S Marshals hold that money for them. Uh, so when they finish that process, they'll send us the checks. Larger amount, that one has to go through the courts. Uh, and, and again, our, our attorneys, you know, can't go to the federal court and say, hey, let's have that hearing now. They have to wait for that to come up. And, and they also don't get an update as it's scheduled to be heard, you know, in January or in February. Uh, all we know is that the best estimate is that it will happen, uh, within this fiscal year. And, and again, that's just coming from our attorney saying, you know, it could take up to six months. Well, i- it's not anything official we're getting from the court.
Well, I, I think what I just want to acknowledge is that it will be realized.
Absolutely.
Yes, okay.
Right. All right. So this last slide that we have, so these are items that we have looked into in order to uh, offset the reduction in the, in the state revenue. The first one is excess positions or positions that we have put on hold for funding for this school year. Those total one million, three hundred and thirty three thousand, seven hundred and eighty six dollars. We have also already put in motions and reductions in some departmental budgets. So far, we have reduced budgets by three hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty two dollars. And we also, um, have a property tax audit that, uh, that was done for two thousand and seventeen that we should be receiving about three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars for. So all in all, the reduction in revenue that we were looking at was the one point nine eight two million dollars. And we have, um, so far um, identified expenses that we could reduce in the area of one point nine nine seven million dollars to cover that. Any questions?
Is it time for questions?
Yes, sir.
Doctor Reyes, you, do you want to, um, go over some of these positions on the left?
Ye- yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, the, the, the first part, uh, is obviously on, on the teachers, which is our largest expense. Our enrollment is down, uh, based on, on, um, on the numbers that, that we've shared. Uh, so obviously, if our enrollment is down, then we would require less teachers. It doesn't make it any more comfortable in, in the classes, but I can share with you that, that our daily studies indicate that on the average for elementary, we are, uh, at less than twenty two to one, uh, per the, the classrooms. Uh, and that's not considering the bilingual classrooms. And the same thing at the secondary, uh, we're, we're slightly lower in enrollment at the secondary, not as much as at the elementary. So we've also looked at, at not replacing some of those positions. Where they are needed, then we are bringing them. So for example, today, uh, we will bring a, a teacher from the high school. Uh, instructional aids, right now, it's difficult to have more than one person in, in the classroom. And, and we see that we need them, uh, a lot less. Um, the, the counselors, I, I believe that's just, uh, um, we didn't reduce counselors. Um, I think th- this is just numbers that, uh, where we had planned to increase, but, um, we did reduce one at the uh, S G L C. And we did reduce one at, uh, blended, uh, but I don't think we reduced one, uh, anywhere else. Uh, I think that was just anticipated positions. Bus drivers, we're not filling the vacancies, we're running less routes. Um, the assistant principal, the same thing there, we're, we're, uh, we're not filling, um, assistant principal vacancies. Uh, I believe this one is, um, at the high school. Uh, same thing with custodians, uh, the director of technology, unfortunately, our technology director passed away. We're not filling that position. Mr. Hengay is assuming those responsibilities. The chief of police, uh, we will not be replacing that position until probably January. Um, and we're replacing them, obviously, our intent would be to hire from within, but that's still to be decided. We didn't increase the peace officer, uh, when there was a vacancy there and safety monitor. So those are just the positions we have. And then on the right, it's just, we've just been trying to comb through the budget. We're not done yet to see where we can reduce. Um, but really, most of our reductions, Mr. Mesa, have to do with decreased enrollment.
Okay, a- and I just want to reiterate again that these are excess positions that are on hold. These are not actual employees.
Correct. The, yes, sir. Absolutely. You're one hundred percent correct. Nobody, nobody's losing their job.
Okay.
Abs- absolutely. K- and I, I'll mention one other thing at, at this point, Mr. Mesa. The, the, today, uh, we provided, uh, a little bit of hope. Uh, if you remember last year, we had to pay out of the operations budget, a large amount of money for food service. And, and it looks like the the Texas Department of Agriculture and the, uh, Federal Department of Agriculture, uh, have taken note of that. And they're looking at, to see how they make up that difference because they know that Del Rio or, or South Leopold Del Rio was not the only district who came in upside down because of food service. And they realize that people have to stay employed. So today, there was a glimpse of hope and, and hopefully we, we can follow up with that and and see some extra funding so that we won't have to take money out of an already tight budget.
So we, are we making any attempt to increase the ADA by bringing students in?
E- e- every, every day, um, Mr. Mesa, the, the campuses are making an effort uh, to call students, uh, and their parents when they're not logged in, uh, or when they're absent, absolutely. We are being extra cautious though on enrolling new students that we believe are not in domicile, meaning we don't believe that they live in Del Rio, we believe that they've lived in Acuña. And it's unfortunate, but that's just part of the requirement, especially in these times. So being very cautious in enrolling new students, but definitely working hard to get students that are enrolled to attend every day, whether it's online or in person.
And sir, um, with regard to ADA, are we getting those devices for connectivity and in getting that ADA?
Yes, sir. Just this last week, we received the bulk order of all the hotspots that we were waiting from, uh, for T A. That'll definitely go a long way in helping with connectivity. Uh, we're still waiting on the, uh, laptops that we, that we did a bulk order with T A. It's, it's looking like, uh, those would come in at the earliest, uh, mid-December, but probably January.
So are tho- those efforts going to assist with the ADA?
It, it, it would definitely help with those students that are having issues with a device or connectivity in terms of them being counted present every day, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, let's see, any questions? One, 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 one more note, Mr. Mesa, if I may?
Yes.
So in, in these last two presentations, we heard from the sheedy on, uh, the increase that was provided to the tax base with the pipeline. And then we heard from, uh, Amy, Amy Childers, our CFO, indicating how state aid was reduced. It's important to note that the state aid was not reduced last year because of attendance, it was just reduced because of the formula. So when, when property values go up, the compressed tax rate goes down. And it goes down at, at a much, a more favorable rate to the taxpayer um, than, than it is to, to those entities collecting taxes. So having increased property values didn't necessarily help the district because we ended up having less revenue. And it's a complicated formula. So what we would like to do next month, now that we've heard the increase of property values and the decrease of state funding. Uh, what we'd like to do next month is invite, uh, a representative from Oak Casey just to come give us about a, a fifteen minute presentation on what to expect uh, with the funding laws, uh, and this new formula, because this really is the first year that we're going to experience that. The compressed tax rate, uh, did not at all, uh, uh, it helped the taxpayer, so we're obviously happy for all taxpayers. But it didn't help the taxing entities. It, in effect, it gave us significantly less income uh, than we, we were otherwise expecting. So, uh, with the board's permission, we would, uh, like to bring, uh, a representative from Oak Casey just to give us a quick review of, of how the funding formulas will continue to affect the district moving forward. Uh, I think that will help put everything together.
I just want to, um, remind the board that we still have pending litigation on other matters related to revenue that hopefully at some point will be realized. Um, not in the near future, but in, in the coming years. I can't give a monthly, but a yearly, like, CFO, you know, update on that, but we do have pending litigation on related matters. Any questions from, from board members? We still have, again, the presenter continuing the presentation. I just, I wanted to double check on a couple of things. Okay, Amy, I guess I'll turn it back over to you.
Oh, that, that was it, sir. That was the last slide. Yes, sir.
Anyone have a question regarding other revenue that, um, we're going to be trying to save money in regards to other programs, maintenance, uh, travel and so forth? Okay, well, I thank you very much for the report.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Next item we have is item A E, attendance and discipline report, term one, Michelle Smith.
Uh, this, Mr. Mesa, I'll, I'll be addressing the report. The report, uh, was provided in its entirety to you right before the meeting and it, it's on your desk. I can upload the presentation, go through it. We, uh, discipline has been very low because of, of most of the kids learning from home. And the attendance, we know that, that it's not only ADA is down, but so is the attendance and I've indicated the efforts. Uh, it's board's decision, Mr. Mesa, if you want me to go through the report or if, if you want me to entertain questions or if the report presentation has provided stance, just let us know.
I looked at it in detail, but, you know, this being a very much different year. I- i- it's hard to kind of, you know, look at the information and say, you know, where we could target areas, uh, for remediation in regard to attendance, but it's been that kind of a year that, um, we kind of expected some things to be out of the ordinary, so it's not your usual year that we can look at one grade level or one campus or another. It's quite different, but I'll turn it over to board members for questions. Any questions about attendance? It's very difficult, sir, to zoom in on a- any item of this kind of year we're having.
Well, i- i- is y'all review the, the, the report, Mr. Mesa, take it home with y'all, is y'all review it. If you have any questions, if y'all email us, we will provide a response via our weekly updates.
Next item we have is item eight F, Tampa Lee Pedro C I S D COVID nineteen update and overview to include protocols for schools and athletics, P P E inventory and transparency, Doctor Reyes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mesa, I will be, uh, sharing, um, the screen and, uh, but everybody's going to join me in the, the presentation. Uh, this, this report, uh, was requested by one of the board members. Um, I will do the introduction and then, uh, I think that there's different individuals in the waiting room or in, in the presenter's room that will, uh, provide additional, uh, information and answer questions. What I'd like to do, Mr. Mesa, is I'd like to take every piece, every time there's a, a different presenter. If we can pause and ask questions, uh, before we move on to a different section, because the presentation, you know, can be quite lengthy depending on, on the discussion. And I'd hate to, I hate for y'all to forget some of the questions. Is that, is that okay?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay, I, I will, um, I'll, I'll begin with, with the first part. Again, I, I mentioned that uh, this was going, uh, this was requested by one of the board members. We would have provided some update, but maybe not as thorough as we're providing today. So I'll, I'll, I'll begin. As you recall, uh, we started school back in August twenty sixth. Um, we went on three weeks of, of, of fully online instruction with the idea that we were going to start transitioning back in September sixteenth. Uh, at that point, we, uh, asked for the four weeks of extension and we decided to transition twenty five percent of the students uh, that, that would come in, um, every week. And by October twelfth, uh, we were at one hundred percent of students who had selected, uh, in school, the face-to-face instruction. Also, by October twelfth, we were able to accommodate any student who wanted to switch from online instruction to face-to-face instruction. So at this point, I think it's safe to say that we are, uh, accommodating or have accommodated uh, one hundred percent of every student that wanted to come back and face-to-face. There might be somebody that requested a change on Friday of last week or Monday of today. But, but really, anyone who had requested, uh, to return to, to the classroom has already been accommodated. What we're going to cover today is just a report on the number of students that are in person versus online. We're going to talk about our district COVID reporting system. I've invited, uh, principals from high school, uh, from secondary and elementary uh, to talk about how they report. Uh, we're going to give you an update on technology devices, a whole lot of our mitigation practices, food service, transportation, and, uh, finally athletics. As of, as of today, uh, I can tell you that, uh, these are elementary numbers. Uh, rather than go through all of them, I'll just let you, uh, um, I'll, I'll, I'll be quiet so that y'all can just quickly look at them. And then I'll transition to our secondary numbers. I can tell you Buena Vista Elementary is the highest campus uh, with four hundred and nine in-person students. Moving over to the high school, uh, you can see that obviously Del Rio High School is the one with the largest students, uh, but the others also have a significant number of kids that are coming on a daily basis. All right, uh, before I, I, I think the first person that is going to present is Mr. Carlos Barrera. So before we talk about our reporting system, is there any question? Uh, are there any questions regarding just the number of, of students that are coming face-to-face versus those that are online?
Yes, I think. Amy, did you have a question? Yes, Amy.
Go back to the screen with the number four, please, Doctor Reyes, just the
Yes.
Elementary real quick, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Can you, can, are you able to see that screen, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. It's just, just a quick second and then you can go on with the presentation. Thank you.
Uh, and, and board members, I apologize. This presentation was finalized just minutes before we started the board meeting. Uh, but, uh, before you go home, we'll print one out to make sure that But, uh, before you go home, we'll print one out to make sure that, um, that, that you have one to, so you can, uh, review and, and ask questions if, if you have some, um, later, okay? So, uh, yes, sir.
Before you go on to the principals, could you put the secondary up now?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, sir. There you go.
I was going to ask that a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't have the S G L C. There's, there's nothing right now because of no discipline problem. How's that working?
You know, I, the conversation that I had with, uh, the principal there is that I believe we had, uh, three students that were actually attending S G L C. And one of them, uh, uh, was quarantined and, and, uh, the other two weren't, uh, there that day. So it's really, there's, there's not much activity going on in S G L C and, uh, the personnel that's there is able to cover it.
Okay, but they're not going to be online. Why, they're going to be in person?
Very few will be in person, ma'am. Very few will be in person. And, and then, uh, when they do come, uh, some may still be at home, uh, getting the services. It'll be, uh, taken on a case-by-case basis.
They're going to be at home? And there's a discipline problem at the school? Is that, is that how that works?
Uh, it, it can work that way, um, where they can do, uh, the, uh, instruction from home in an asynchronous manner. Uh, but again, i- it has to be taken on a case-by-case basis because, um, if there isn't any, um, strict guidance at home or supervision, well, then we're better off receiving the students in, uh, face-to-face. However, uh, ma'am, right now, most of our students come to the S G L C from the secondary level. Right now, we have over seventy percent of all secondary students, uh, attending from home. Uh, therefore, you know, the twenty-four percent that are actually coming to school, we just don't expect any, um, major discipline problems, uh, where, where they would have to go to the S G L C. It, it, it's just next year possibly, but this year with only twenty-four percent actual attendance, uh, in the school, we just don't anticipate major discipline problems. The ones that are there at S G L C are all one hundred percent carryovers from last year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Dr. Rios?
Yes, sir.
Do you know how we fare with other districts our size in regard to face-to-face instruction?
It's, it's different, Mr. Mesa, because depending on the region of Texas, I can tell you that in districts in San Antonio, just this week, they were starting back to face-to-face instruction for those students that wanted to come. And then you look at much smaller districts, they've all but discontinued online instruction. They told, and they actually sent letters. And of course, we're talking about the much smaller districts. They've sent letters saying, look, we're stopping face-to-face instruction, uh, I'm sorry, online instruction after the first six weeks. If you want online instruction, you can, uh, go to a different district. So it, it just, it, it just depends on, um, on what region we're, we're talking about.
I almost want to compare it with, you know, bordering districts like right on the border, Eagle Pass, Laredo.
Sure, w- we'll absolutely do that, Mr. Mesa. Uh, uh, we will, uh, work with, with different people. Uh, I don't know who I'll assign it to at this point, but we'll work and get, um, we can definitely get Eagle Pass, Laredo, and some of the other bordering, uh, districts, uh, from El Paso down, uh, to Brownsville. We'll see how much of that information we can gather on districts that, that have at least schools, high schools our size. And, and we'll try to get a comparison on, on the percentages. Uh, I don't know that we'll be able to get every district, but we'll definitely approach as many districts. And we'll either provide this in a board update or a presentation next month.
Now, really, um, you know, we can't push this because, uh, our positivity rate is state, you know, consistent with eighteen, nineteen percent. So we're not anywhere near where we should be. So it's going to be a long year.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mesa, as, uh, as Mr. Barrera gets ready to present, I, I just want to say something, uh, that, that's very important. We have an extensive, uh, way of, of trying to figure out, you know, who's exposed and, and, and who's, uh, positive and how far it reaches. And a lot of it has to do with our relationship with the county, the city of Del Rio, and the local health authority. You heard them present the last time we met and the cooperation with them has increased even beyond that. So I, I'd like to just, um, make sure that, that, that that doesn't go unsaid. Uh, because it, the relationship really has been incredible. And, and we're appreciative of, uh, Dr. Uteiras, Dr. Palau, uh, the commissioner and, um, the commissioner's court and, and, and the city council because it really has been a whole lot of collaboration. Uh, definitely, I would say, our finest moment in working together. So, uh, it's not easy because there's a whole lot of students and families involved, but it really is an incredible, uh, uh, cooperation. So, uh, with that said, uh, I'd like to turn it over to, I believe it's Mr. Barrera that's going to go first. He's just going to make this come to life as to what they see on the campuses. And then I believe Ms. Pond is going to go next. And then, uh, either Mr. Barrera, Ms. Pond, or the other principals, uh, I believe, Ms. Sutton and, uh, Ms. Olis are also available, uh, should there be any questions. Carlos, can you please, uh, share your activities at your campus?
Yes, sir. Good evening, um, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios, and members of the board. Um, so the, the, um, the graphic that you're looking at right now is the model of our reporting system. Um, and, and we use two tools, uh, to do our reporting. Uh, the first tool that we use is our COVID screening tool, which is for, um, students, um, have symptoms on campus. It, it's, it's a very simple tool to use. Uh, our nurses and our, um, campus contacts are the ones that fill out the form. Uh, we call home, ask, uh, parents' information, the questions on that, on that tool, to then turn that information over to, to, uh, Dr. Palau and the health authority. The second tool that we use is our self-reporting form. That, along with our online submission, uh, self-reporting form, um, this process is the same. When parents call in and, and give us information, um, self-report, if you will, um, on, on COVID or, or symptoms or positive tests within the family, um, or that their, uh, family members are, are being tested, that information is taken down by our campus, uh, contacts. And then that information goes to, to the local health authority. Uh, they then give us guidance, uh, on whether or not the student, uh, or families need to quarantine. As soon as we get information from, from the local health authority, then we're immediately contacting families, um, and, 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 uh, working with the families to get as much information as possible. Uh, we work with our teachers and, um, U I L, uh, activities, uh, to get as much information as possible, including seating charts and, 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 and you name it, uh, to, to get the people that are in closest contact, um, information that they need in order to, to either go and test or quarantine. Uh, we follow the guidance of, of the local health authority at all times. The turnaround time on, on getting information and feedback back from them is sometimes within minutes, sometimes, uh, an hour. Uh, but, but it's, it's very quick. It's a very quick turnaround. And in turn, our turnaround time to, to notify parents and, and to give them information is, is quick as well. Once the investigation process begins, um, then we're, we're in contact with the, the local health authority uh, throughout the day. Um, every evening, uh, Dr. Palau, uh, sends us updates and information and we do the same. She gives us, uh, information to give to the parents. And then we keep in contact with the parents, um, throughout the quarantine process. If, if the parents give back a negative test, for instance, uh, that information and test results, a copy of the test results goes back to, uh, local health authority. And then they give us more guidance and information to, to, uh, give to the parents. The, these reports also go to our administrative director here, uh, in the district. And that gets reported to T E A, uh, in a timely manner. And, and it's a process that, for us, um, has worked very well. I'm the campus contact from my campus and, and, um, I have no complaints. Um, the communication from parents, the communication from the health authority, and even amongst campuses with students who have siblings at other campuses, um, has been phenomenal. But that, that's more or less the breakdown of, of, uh, the reporting system and how it works, um, on our campuses.
Mr. Barrera, you had to investigate numerous cases, uh, but particularly you investigated two cases that had to do with athletics without indicating the sport, uh, or, or, or the gender. Uh, can you just provide the board an overview of what was involved, uh, in, in that, um, that review?
Sure.
And then we'll move on to Ms. Pond and, and then we'll see if the board members have any questions.
Sure. Um, so in, 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 in those cases, and, and I'll, I'll use both of them as, as in, as the example, the practices were, were videotaped. So that gave us clear indication of, of the athletes, um, that we were, uh, looking to see, uh, who's in close contact with them. We got together with the coaching staffs, um, with the athletic director, uh, myself as a campus contact from early college high school, uh, the campus contact from, from the high school, uh, which were the two, uh, uh, student bodies that were involved. Um, and we reviewed the film frame by frame, um, and, and, and really pinpointed who was at high risk. It, it was a, a cooperative effort. It, it, it went very smoothly. Um, and in both, uh, situations, I strongly believe that, that, uh, the appropriate decisions were made.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mesa, it pleases, we can, uh, continue on with Ms. Pond and then, uh, bring the principals back in to see if there's any questions, uh, about what's going on, on their campuses.
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll have questions again for both.
Yes, is, is Ms. Pond, are you, uh, ready to go?
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Pond, since, uh, Mr. Barrera has already discussed the process, can you just share with us, uh, any, uh, any single experience you've had at your campus without having to detail, uh, a student's name or grade level or even gender? Uh, just share the communication process that specifically that you had with the parents.
Sure. We, um, had a case that we needed, uh, to report. Uh, we used the, uh, self-reporting form. We contacted the local health authority immediately. Um, we gathered the seating chart. Dr. Palau was unable to tell from the seating chart if the students were truly six feet apart. So she sent a tracer immediately. Uh, the tracer and I walked to the room. Um, the, the teacher went right on with her lesson like we weren't even there. Um, we were able to determine which students were in close proximity. Um, we edited, uh, our district letter that let parents know that there was a possible close contact with a student. Um, we then, I then personally made phone calls to all of those students. We followed up with the letter. Um, and then parents were in contact with questions about how long they needed to be quarantined, um, when they could get testing. Fortunately, it was right before the city did the big, uh, free testing at the civic center, uh, for the weekend. And then once their results came back, they were sent to us and we forwarded them on to Dr. Palau, who then gave us guidance, um, to either lift the quarantine early based on results or if we needed to continue that quarantine.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mesa, we're going to pause, uh, on the, on the presentation. I, I know that, uh, Ms. Pond, I can't see who's out there, but are the other two fellow principals in the vicinity in case they can answer some of the questions?
Yes, sir.
Tell them to put their masks on and, and, and join the, the room. It's a, it's a big enough room where they can social distance. And then y'all can take turns answering questions, okay? Any questions from, uh, board related to some campus activities with the reporting, Mr. Mesa?
Yes, I, I have some questions and I'll turn it over to the other board members. And, and I guess, I don't know if I'm asking the, the principals or Dr. Rios, but here recently, the, the city's coming up with some testing sites with a less invasive test, COVID nineteen. I believe it started today. There's like three locations. Are we encouraging students that, um, again, that are asymptomatic to go for this less invasive test?
Yeah, yes, sir, Mr. Mesa. That was, uh, brought up today. It just so happens that today's our cabinet meetings. Uh, we meet every Monday. It was brought up today. Uh, Ms. Hernandez, Sandra Hernandez, uh, we will reach out, uh, to the local health authority and, and definitely take full advantage, uh, as much as we can. Uh, and if they think it's a good idea to advertise, then we'll definitely do that. But we were just, uh, we just had that discussion today. We will update the board, uh, on any discussion that Sandra or I have with, uh, Dr. Palau and, and Dr. Uteiras.
Yeah, I think that the biggest threat that, um, some of these students are asymptomatic and it could be spreaders and we don't know until, you know, they go for an actual test. And the protocol has changed quite a bit now where you don't have to have any symptoms and it's less invasive. So I think it's an excellent opportunity for students to be able to, to be tested and, and, and protect our staff and everybody else. But I'll turn it over to the other board members. I know that there's some questions. Um, Mr. Rafferty?
Sure. I have a lot of questions, so as we go through this, it'll be, um, I guess we'll do it piece by piece. And talk about how we go in and determine with the local health authority, going in and determining who needs to be quarantined because of, of close contact and, and the stuff like that. And in, in my dealings with the public and with staff, since we've started back to school or bringing students back in, um, there seems to be, um, extreme differences from one campus to the other in, in what is going on. Whether it's Monty Green, whether it's North Heights, whether it's Lamar, Garfield, all the different individuals I've talked to or who come to me, it's seven different stories, uh, for seven different elementaries and, and that's not even getting into the high school yet. So my question, one of my questions is, we talk about, um, quarantining a few out of one classroom because the tracers came down or the health authority went in and, um, for illustrative purposes, took a measuring stick and measured six feet out from where this individual was sitting and said, okay, these are the ones who were, were closest. The CDC has, has finally gone in and made up its flipping mind that it is airborne. Uh, there, so how can we go in and say that, um, only these within six feet of this child need to be quarantined, uh, when the, um, when it's, it's airborne? Let's, let's be very honest with each other, um, in, in the community. Um, the mask thing, uh, we know we're having problems with kids trying to keep their masks on and, um, over their noses and, and different things like that. So I don't know if that's something that the district can answer, but it's something that the local health authority needs to come on here and, and, and tell us why there's such a disparity, a discrepancy in, well, only within here, um, this, this area, uh, these students need to go in and be, uh, quarantined. When we've got one campus that's going in and quarantined an entire classroom, uh, there that was told not to come to work today, don't send your kids today and, and don't, um, the teacher not to come in because you had, uh, that going in and, um, occurring. and and don't um the teacher not to come in because you had uh that going in and um uh occurring. And then the health authority i- is going in and um as was kind of mentioned as to how long they should quarantine, three days, five days, fourteen days? There's no consistency. Um there, it it needs to be one or it needs to be one or the other. It's a fourteen day quarantine, then we go in and we quarantine everyone for um for fourteen um days. I I don't understand the um the discrepancy that's going on all over the place. The um you know, that that's that's one of the things that I'm I'm have questions about. And again, the local health authority is not here to really answer that, um but
I can answer that.
Discrepancy.
Uh I I can answer that now. I I don't want to speak with absolute truth, uh because I'm not the local health authority. Uh but I can tell you that uh first, every classroom is different. Because, for example, today I was at Lonny Green and uh Ms. Pond and I uh did our weekly walkthrough and uh we went into one classroom that's smaller than the other classrooms and and the proximity there of one student to the next is different. So that has, that definitely has an issue to do with that. Now, before going on, I will tell you that i- as we listen to cases across the state, I can tell you that uh when they don't have a relationship with a local health authority like we have, like San Angelo has, something happens and they go in there and they quarantine everybody and 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 then the word goes out, you know, so and so lost their volleyball team for fourteen days or so and so closed their middle school down for fourteen days, only to reopen it two days later because they did their investigation. We have the benefit of having the local health authority cooperate with us and and come in and do an investigation. And whether they're measuring the distance of one desk to the other or or uh the activities that happened in in the classroom, uh every case is different. It it doesn't, it it doesn't, there isn't a formula uh that could be easily un-un-understood. Now, in terms of how many days a local health authority quarantines, a lot has to do with when they believe the person uh became infected. And and uh and it's an individual trace. Now, obviously, it would have to be the local health authority that could speak with more certainty about that. But uh they are the experts and I would rather follow their direction than 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 just try to have a a one-size-fits-all for everybody. I know it's frustrating uh because it's something that this this um COVID nineteen virus is something that none of us understand. But we are lucky enough to have uh the guidance of of some very dedicated individuals in in this community. But unfortunately, every case is different. Uh take, for example, uh again, I'll uh Buena Vista, which is another campus that I visited today. You go into a classroom and the teacher has dividers up. And that plays a a role also in in what proximity there was or 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 wasn't. But every case is going to be different. But every case is going to be thoroughly studied before a decision is made. Uh and and that's not easy. Uh I guarantee you, if we didn't have a local health authority, then we probably were would be going on these uh long quarantine periods. The other part I, the other part, it's gonna come on later on in the report, is that of all positive cases we've had on campus, none of them have been related to somebody uh catching the virus on campus. Now, what does that mean? It you can either say uh, well, you're awfully lucky or just say that the measures that we've implemented, you know, have worked. Because in none of the traces that we've done, other than the adult ones uh before that happened in the summer, no, well, none of the student cases, none of them have been attributed of one person getting it uh from another person in the classroom. Uh but every case is gonna be different and it's something that that um that that none of us can can uh fully understand without examining each individual case. Now, if if you would like, uh, Mr. Mesa, the board members like, we can invite the local health authority to come back every other month. Uh I know they work late into the night, uh but I'm sure that that they would not mind giving us a a uh update every other month as to how things are going and then they can ask some of the these questions. But yes, every case is gonna be different and and that's not a bad thing. Uh that's that's a good thing because it just means every case is being thoroughly investigated. It's not a willy-nilly hodgepodge, we'll give you a ten days quarantine or we'll give you, you know, ten students quarantine a whole class. Every case is thoroughly investigated.
Right. Um and that there isn't a formula, like you say, and let's expand on that. There there's not a formula uh there, but I I personal opinion, I see it as gambling with the health of the students in the community and and teachers because there isn't a uh specific um a specific formula. And maybe we need to start a serious public campaign uh in partnership with the school district, the county health authority, hospital. Because what we're we're seeing is um parents having it, um being positive or someone at home has been tested or positive and they're still sending their child to school, knowing very well that someone in the household has been tested. Uh there is a waiting. No one should be going, coming to school because if we go back to talking about athletics, that's how we got into that particular mess. You know, they're again not saying the sport or stuff like that. It all went back to that uh student came to the uh practices knowing that someone had gone in and and been tested in in the family, which brings up my next two next few questions or or um stuff. If a student has been tested or knowingly knows that someone at home has it and comes to school and forces a quarantine, is the district able to um implement some sort of disciplinary action against the student? Second, there, if a parent knowingly sends their child uh with someone in the household who is positive or the child has tested and is still awaiting results, uh there um that's a a public health endangerment. And there is there legal action uh that either the district or the city or someone can take against uh that because you're endangering the lives of the individuals in the classroom, the teachers, et cetera.
We know for a fact that um um Valverde County delivers orders of of people having a quarantine, but obviously that's after the fact and and when they do know that. Uh as far as what discipline uh would be appropriate uh for students that that come to school, I I I'll be frankly, I I don't have an answer for that, Mr. Overfelt. Uh but I will visit with the school attorney uh so that he can give us an opinion uh very quickly uh so that we can see uh what the situation would be. If if a student was to come and 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 do that, I I'm sure that there's some kind of suspension that could uh be had. Obviously, it would require a lot of investigation because uh we'd have to prove that the student actually knew that the parents were 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 testing. And as far as legal action uh against the parents, I don't know uh what would have to happen, but I'll definitely uh ask that question. I think the 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 best thing that we can do and the most immediate thing that we can do that we've discussed is you know, have that campaign uh where we join with the city and the county uh to encourage people uh to stay home when they test. Uh I know that it's very difficult because every time there's free testing, I'll give you, the the last time there was free testing, we had a lot of teachers participate. It was on a Saturday. And uh you know, come Sunday night, I was talking, I was on the phone late with some principals. We still haven't gotten our results. What do we do? Do we quarantine? Do we go to school? And and so then what do we do? We we turn to again Dr. Palau saying, okay, what what do we do? A lot of people went testing uh just voluntarily and now they can't come. One, we can't cover all the classrooms because we had a large number of teachers test. Uh and luckily, the results came in Saturday night, Monday, right before school started, uh and we were able to to move forward. But but I think the best thing we can do right now is have an aggressive campaign through the radio stations and and different uh social media, encouraging parents to to be more transparent. Because obviously, that is just something that none of our uh campus contacts uh or teachers can't control what the parents do, especially with the little ones. You know, the little ones won't know that mama got tested. But I think of that aggressive campaign is certainly a way to go and we'll work with Mr. Reno Luna and his staff so that he can work with the city and and the county and and through their public relations office and see what we can do.
Just last thing, and then I'll yield, Mr. Mesa. Later in the presentation, will there be um discussion on how we notify staff and um students and and stuff like that because I have some questions about that?
Uh Ms. Hernandez is gonna present it a little bit, and whether she it's in her presentation or not, I'll ask her to incorporate that as well. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Overfelt. We'll go to Amy.
Thank you. Um Dr. Rios, I know we had, I we I had mentioned to you um just kind of being off Josh that we need to just set a different kind of tone with the community when it comes to testing because like we've already mentioned, you know, if you know you've gone to test, you should be at home. And you should, and I think your child should stay at home with you as well. I feel like we need to like campaign, like you said, because we have to set a different tone for that. It's just common courtesy. You know, you know you've gone to test, then it's in your best interest just to keep your family home until you get your results. You know, we have to set a different kind of tone there. And I and I think with Josh, we need to have some kind of consequence. You know, it's not, you know, and we're trying to do the best to take care of our kids and our staff, and then we have these these hiccups. You know, big hi- big hiccups, you know? So we have to set a different type of tone. And then back to the campuses, I I get the same kind of, you know, uh email and stuff. It's just, it isn't consistent. And I don't, I know we need to find some some way to be consistent because that's what I keep hearing. It's not consistent. Um different campuses do something different and we do something different over here. And I understand what you were saying earlier about, you know, your your tracers and stuff like that because everything is different, but we have to figure it out somewhere where it's all consistent and it's just not different. Because that that's causing a lot of confusion as well. So I just wanted to let you know that. And I've already told you that I think we need to take a different tone. We need to set a different kind of tone.
A- a- absolutely, ma'am. The the but a- again, the 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 message that I hope that we all get is that it's not the campus that's different, it's the case by case. Uh because saying that the campus is different would imply that the principal or assistant principal that's handling that is making that decision. That's just not the case. Every campus, every case is thoroughly investigated uh and and the recommendation is made in conjunction with the local health authority. Uh but uh like I said, I I'll invite uh Dr. Palau uh to come and answer some more specific questions. Um and uh I'll definitely um work with Mr. Luna and uh see what we can do in in being a little bit more aggressive in the campaign. And I'll definitely uh get a a feedback from uh the attorneys about the discipline. Mr. Mesa?
Any other question, Amy? Is that it? Okay. Dr. Rios, I would recommend that um, you know, with the winter season coming on and the flu season, we have Dr. Palau and uh Dr. Gutierrez. Give us an update like at the very start of the next meeting and then skip a meeting and then come back again and give us another update. Um they're they're valid questions and I think with the flu season coming up, it's just um proper that we have updates. As I mentioned, the positivity rate has stayed constant with eighteen, nineteen percent, which is very high compared to San Antonio districts and beyond. The fact that we're on the border does not help. You know, we're trying to do everything to bring in the students and improve the ADA and uh go on to have uh we're not gonna have a normal year, but to have as much as normality as we can. And um I know that we can have all these precautions in place that is still going to happen where uh they're either exposed outside or by a community um family, relative, or community, uh you know, again, contact. So it's just the proper that we have the local health agency, uh Dr. Palau, Dr. Gutierrez. Start the meeting next time with a report. And then if we can continue that every other meeting, would that be possible, sir?
Well, absolutely. Reach out to them, Mr. Mesa, and 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 plan for that. The the, like I said, there are true partners and I'm sure that they'd be more than happy to come here and try to educate us as much as possible.
So the students are going to be encouraged to be participating in this test that will be coming on or that has started?
Y- yes, sir. Uh all of all of that. We'll uh a- as early as tomorrow, we'll uh have that discussion with uh the the local health authority and and uh whoever's uh sponsoring this testing uh just to make sure that we take the biggest advantage of it and uh we'll provide a board update this Friday based on those conversations so that we don't have to wait till next month so to inform y'all as as to what we're doing.
Uh I think, you know, again, the fact that it's being done free is less invasive and the results are given, I believe, within twenty-four to forty-eight hours. We need to take advantage of that as much as possible.
Yes, sir. I know Ms. Hernandez is making notes, but I'm gonna make notes too because I've already agreed to a lot of stuff and I want to make sure that we can deliver that.
Okay. Anyone else with a question? Mr. Webb?
I don't have a question. I think everything that has already been been said. I just wanna ask that the campuses encourage the students either through announcements uh early in the morning to make sure that they cover their complete face, including their nose, which I know some students are doing it and others are not. I don't know why they feel they have to uncover their nose to speak or their mouth, but they need to be encouraged every day. Uh I know that the little ones will keep their masks on. I've seen them. But it's our older students that for some reason are not in compliance. So I don't know what can be done other than maybe just daily reminders, I guess.
I'll have on that issue, ma'am. I will uh work with um Ms. Gomez and uh the Del Rio Cares Program just to have some simple uh reminders uh in terms of lessons and and we'll ask a particular group of teachers to just have that constant reminder once a week. Uh that one is is a that one had been discussed uh before. It's just time that we do it now.
Do we have any questions for the principals? If not, I just want to appreciate the fact that you're here today, again, um to be able to answer questions for us, but thank you for your attention to this matter and we appreciate that. Mr. Webb?
I don't I don't have a question, but I would like to recognize the early college, Mr. Barra, because I noticed that his attendance went from ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent. And I'm assuming that's between the uh online and the face-to-face. But uh it's basically the only campus that you saw an increase, so I don't know what you're doing there, sir, to encourage them to stay online or get online when they're supposed to so that attendance can be taken. Uh but I think uh you should be commended for that. And the other one that was real close was uh Del Rio High School. So either students are really liking the online classes where they they will report in. But again, uh you're to be commended for that. Because that ha- definitely helps us with the ADA and that's what we definitely need, whether they're face-to-face or online. We need to have that ADA. I mean, as Mr. Mesa has already alluded to the fact that we're losing funds, we don't want to lose personnel. So, thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out, Ms. Webb. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barra.
If you, we'll continue with the the presentation, Mr. Mesa.
Yes, sir.
I believe the next presenter will be uh Ms. Hernandez. And again, uh I know that one of one of the concerns that was expressed uh by board members and by different community members was, you know, the concern of of what positive cases were out there and and were we being transparent? So much like the county has their their reporting of numbers on a daily basis, we want to do it at least on a weekly basis. Uh and and it might be where we're able to update this on a day-to-day, but But Ms. Hernandez is going to talk about how we share this, how we will begin to share this information. We just wanted to present it first to the board and then she'll do her best effort to try to update it every morning. But again, it just, it's going through a whole lot of cases, so we'll see how much she can do. Ms. Hernandez, can you take over the presentation for now?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. What you see in front of you is a template dashboard with the, we'll have two reports. This one is, will show you the number of confirmed cases in our school district. Beginning the week of October the twelfth through the sixteenth. Now, for, in keeping with privacy practices, we want everyone to know that there's no names, no indicators that are identifiers that will show, you know, who the person is or who the individual is. And so we're keeping this as broad as possible, but providing transparency so that our community, our board, everyone will know the number of cases that we have received thus far. Working with the local health authorities and our campus contacts, this is, these are the numbers that you will see. You'll see the number of student confirmed cases on the very upper bar. And then you'll see the number of staff confirmed cases on the lower bar. And on Monday, for example, there was one confirmed case, staff member that was reported on that particular day. On Wednesday, we had three student cases reported. On Thursday, we had two student cases reported. And then on Friday, we had one confirmed case reported. The total for the week is seven, seven cases, including both students and staff. And then the cumulative cases, cumulative number of cases is eleven. And these are cumulative since the beginning of September twenty-first. We went back as far as September twenty-first when we first had our student case. The graphic that you see on the lower left is, these are the student cases. Then this one identifies the students that have had exposure to COVID on campus. In other words, did they contract COVID on campus? And you see that the number is zero. The exposures for the students, all of them were exposed off-campus. The, there are five of those students were in person. And then one student was an online student. Looking at the number of staff cases, the one case student is in exposure off-campus. So you'll see that the majority, the vast majority of exposures and contracting of confirmed of COVID has been because of the contact with someone off-campus. Do you have any questions with regard to this particular dashboard?
Question board members? No, Sandra?
All right. So this shows pretty much a pattern. We'll begin to start posting this. We'd like to do this on our Facebook, but as well on our school website. We do have a COVID page that we're working on so that we can include the dashboard there and for our community to see.
Sandra, I just want to say that a lot of work has gone on to prepare for this. And I really appreciate everyone from campus administrators to custodians to staff members. And of course, central office, you know, for supplying whatever's needed. But I think it shows that we're doing the best that we can at this point.
Yes, sir, thank you. And I, I believe that you're going to have some of that information provided to you later on in this presentation. And we'll see how all of this comes together. And my part is just to show you the reporting. I'll take this report from this report every week on Monday. We're required to submit a report to the Texas Education Agency. Texas Education Agency and the Department of State Health Services have a combined report. And, and so we, they, these are the questions that they'll ask. They'll ask, how many cases do we have on campus that are confirmed? They'll only want us to identify those that are confirmed. How many of them are staff? How many of them are students? Whether or not these individuals, if they were contracted on campus, was there an exposure? Were there other students in close contact? And how many students did we have to send home? Were there any in quarantine that had to get quarantined as a result of that? And so this report is pretty much based on, on what we are already reporting to the state.
Sandra? I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Mesa.
Sandra, who is going to give us information on the personal protecting equipment? Or can we?
Mr. Mesa, we don't have that as part of the presentation. But if you'll, but any questions that you have, I can definitely answer that.
Well, my question is, do we have enough, let's say, face masks for teachers and staff?
Yes, sir, absolutely. What we found, Mr. Mesa, is that most of the students brought their own face masks. So what the state provided us and what we already had procured ourselves was way more than enough. So we're, we're pretty well covered in that area. We also developed a method for campuses to be able to order a whole lot of items that, that they think they're running out of and that won't come out of their budget. So if they need anything having to do with cleaning or hand sanitizer, any of those items. They don't have to use your campus budget. They just send an email to a specific email we provided with the items they need. And, and we'll make sure that we're always stocked at the warehouse and we can provide those. So we're pretty covered in terms of personal protective equipment. And a little bit later on the presentation, we'll talk about how many classroom dividers we've built and different items related to those fixtures.
And so later on, I guess somebody can explain again, you know, the gloves and disposal of this PPE equipment. Like if they have a daily mask, you know, to make sure that they dispose of it properly and gloves, the same thing?
Yes, sir, we can, we can definitely talk about it. But while Sandra is still presenting, I think that maybe Mr. Overfelt had asked about how we communicate with parents. And Sandra's been taking the lead in the three letters that we provided to principals. So.
Okay.
She can continue with that?
Sure, yes. And so since we're on this particular dashboard and in this scenario, when we have a confirmed case, we issue out, we have put together form letters for each of the campuses. So that in the event there is a confirmed case, they are sent to the campus parents. So it's campus-wide, we will alert them. We will alert any parents who, if we, if the local health authority finds that there are any students that happen to be in close contact with any of these children, they receive a quarantine letter specifically for them. So there is, it is customized depending on each scenario. And, and as mentioned earlier, Dr. Rios mentioned that each, each circumstance is different. So we have situations in which if, if, as you see here, we have exposures that are off-campus. We come to find out that a family member has been exposed and they have been sick. And maybe perhaps the student who happened to have been on campus. So our contact tracers and Dr. Palau will come back, determine with the campus contact, how long the student has been on campus. Or maybe perhaps the student had not been on campus during that time of exposure. So those are all of those questions that are asked through that investigative process. And once that is determined and established, then the local health authority provides the campus contact with the, the next step. And the letter that would go out and issued out. Overall, the campus overall does become aware that there is a COVID campus on, on that has been identified on campus. And also identifies that not, if, if they were not in close contact and normal operations, will resume. So maybe perhaps this, there was just a small area, maybe perhaps it was only one student who was exposed. And so again, this provides the reassurance to the camp, to the campus parents, the community, that it was the circumstances of that campus and, and of that particular case. And then that the entire operations of that campus will continue as usual. And there's no need to close a classroom or there is no need to close the school.
So just to summarize, Mr. Mesa, for example, the slide we're looking at, on Wednesday, there was confirmed three cases. So in each one of those cases at the campus that the students were on that day, the entire faculty received a letter indicating that there was a positive case. And the entire student body's family received the letter. Now, people that were in close proximity, if any were in close proximity, were directly notified because then they had to quarantine. If there was no close proximity, well, then they didn't receive the close proximity letter, you also have to quarantine. But in, in every case, there, there had or should have been sent a letter home with students. And, and the entire faculty should have been notified on, on those campuses. And to the best of my knowledge, that has happened in every case.
Yes. So this is the number of confirmed, I'm sorry, this is just to kind of reiterate, these are confirmed cases. That means that they have had a COVID test and the results have come back as positive for that individual.
Sandra, would it be possible to put in another step and say, you know, every time you send out a letter that there is a positive case for you to receive one and date it on the particular campus?
That the letter is dated?
Just acknowledging that it went out.
Oh, what you're saying, Mr. Mesa, is that the principals issue Sandra a letter so that she can have a hard copy on hand that says, this is the letter that went out?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
Just in that, please.
Right.
They won't forget.
Sure.
Common practice.
We will do that, sir. The next slide, if we're ready for the next slide. This next slide actually is different from the other because this one identifies the number of students and faculty that were exposed to an individual that has a confirmed COVID case. And these are the ones that are sent home to quarantine. And so if you can see this, again, your first bar indicates the number of student cases. And the second one below that is the number of staff cases. It's an example, on Monday, October the twelfth, we had seven reports of exposed, students exposed to a confirmed case. And three in staff members who were exposed to a confirmed case. And as you see the rest of the, the figures, on Tuesday, we had two students and one staff member. October fourteenth, on Wednesday, five student cases. On Thursday, we had ten student cases that were confirmed, exposed to an individual. And two staff cases Friday, and there was one student. The total number of cases of students and staff being exposed during this week is thirty-one. Cumulative number of cases is ninety-four. And when you see the number of exposed student cases, we had three students that were exposed on campus to another individual who had a confirmed case. And then twenty-two were exposed off-campus. The number of staff cases, we had six individuals who were exposed on campus.
Now, just to clarify, this is just exposure, doesn't mean that they were confirmed positive. It just means that they were notified that they were in proximity. Now hopefully, they were wearing their masks and there was, and they're, they're going to be negative. But those are the people that got that type of letter that says they were exposed. Earlier, I mentioned that we sent a letter just saying there was a COVID case. And then if you were in proximity where we believe you could have been potentially exposed, then you get this type of letter, the quarantine letter.
The quarantine letter.
Sandra, normally it's going to be ten, twelve to fourteen days? What is the case?
The length of the quarantine depends on each individual case. We cannot, I cannot give you a number, it just depends on each circumstance and situation.
Okay.
But we'll ask Dr. Palau to come in and share with us different examples. And hopefully she can be here next month. Before we bring on the next presenter, any other questions for Ms. Hernandez?
Ms. Overfelt? Yes?
Yes. So I'm a teacher, secondary. And I have a class, my class is over and done with. And then three of my students are sent home because of exposure. They've been notified that someone at home had it or whatever, and the district found out about it. So we sent them home. And that takes place at ten o'clock in the morning. Why would I get an email at five in the evening? Oh, by the way, we had students, you had students who were possibly exposed there or at home that were sent home because they, they could have had it. Why would, why would I not be notified until five in the evening? Why wouldn't I be notified when those children are checked out?
Yeah. In, in, in most cases, Mr. Overfelt, in all cases, they should be informed just as soon as possible, especially if we believe that the teacher had exposure. Now, that's in most cases. I, without knowing the specific case and knowing what was going on at the campus at that time, I couldn't tell you. The only, what I can tell you is that the only reason that teacher would not have been immediately notified in a perfect situation is because the teacher herself or himself had not had exposure to the case. And, and she or he are not required to quarantine. So therefore, contacting that individual teacher, the immediacy of it is not as urgent as if the teacher had been exposed. Now, in a perfect world and if things are calm on a campus, we would love for, for everybody who was anywhere in the classroom to be notified. But absolutely, when they're exposed, it must be immediately notified. But again, without knowing the circumstance, I can only venture to say that that teacher was not exposed. And therefore was not urgently notified. But again, I'd have to know the specific case. And I'm not saying that what I'm assuming happened, happened because I, I don't know if you're talking hypothetically or if you actually have a case that you want us to go and investigate.
I have a case, but because of HIPAA and all that, I'm not going to say it here. I'll, I'll let y'all know.
Sure.
About it. But I'm just, I'm just wondering. Because again, it goes back to, this goes back to, we talked about exposure. The child was exposed and could be possibly a carrier of it. Like been in the classroom. And if we look at some of our secondary buildings, they're on massive recirculating systems. They're, they're recirculating the air and don't necessarily pull in fresh air all the time. So I, I guess I have a hard time wrapping around the idea of student was in there who's possibly positive. Or I'm not going to, I'm not considering all these other students to have been in direct contact with the teacher to be in direct contact. That's just, I guess it's just a personal thing. And what I'm expressing is the fear that is amongst our staff and stuff that is being relayed to the seven of us on a, on a, on a constant basis. And I know we had this conversation of, you know, why don't we put out every single time when we have a positive or something like, because, or, or we've had a, a close contact. Because of, like I asked when we started allowing students Like I asked when we started allowing students and I wanted us to be very transparent. And we've had the conversation. Not to incite, not to incite fear or panic. And then, but that that was the reason that was given to me, that's why we we didn't, but. The fear and panic's been there from day one. There that everyone is scared and that's what I'm trying to. That's what I'm trying to get across and try and get something. Very solidly. Laid out. There to continuously try and reassure, because everyone is just. Most everyone is scared, I know there are those people out there who are like, I don't care if I get it. And and stuff, it's it's not that bad or whatever, and I'm not going to get into semantics and politics. But there's a large population of our, of our teachers and staff. Who are scared beyond belief. So that's. What I'm just trying to get across.
Yeah, absolutely, we understand that and you know, in our communications with the principals. They deal with staff that's scared on a daily basis and and we understand that. Because I think that at least all of us here in the district. I don't hear too many of of the district employees, including. People not necessarily on campus, say that they're not scared to get it, I think that here in Del Rio, because of the mortality rate that we've seen. Everybody is scared. However, I I it's difficult to trust people when when you're scared. But I just want to remind our parents and our students and our faculty that. Since we've implemented all these precautions and all this tracing. At least, as far as we know. Nobody has contracted the disease on campus. And a lot of it has to do with the fact that teachers are. Reminding students constantly to wear the masks because of the social distancing that's happening, because of the dividers that we put up, because of the washing and all procedures. And and. And it's still difficult to trust, I get it, you know, I myself have my daughter learning from home. So so none of us are are immune to any of this. All I would offer is that. We investigate every case thoroughly and at least to date. Not that it's going to be like that forever, but at least to date. Nobody has contracted it on campus based on the investigations done by the local health authority. And we hope that that continues. We'll keep building dividers on a daily basis, I know that some teachers say that they're ugly on campus and and I agree because. Because they are, they're they're not the prettiest thing to have. We just today ordered clear plastic. We we had to build hundreds of them, so we built them the easiest way we could. Now we're going to come back and and for those teachers that want to retrofit and with with clear plastic, we'll have that available and and we'll keep doing that. It's not that I'm asking people to trust us because this is something that none of us know the full extent, but I can offer that. We just haven't had a spread on campus because of all the procedures we have in place. And 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 we'll keep working at it, so.
Again, those are expected fears of the unknown. To me, the biggest worry is going to be the contact sports that are going to start, well, they've started already, but. There could be a super spreader. But we'll have to constantly monitor those situations, no, Amy, you had your hand up.
I did, sir, just, so Dr. Rios, let's go back to exposure for a minute because I don't. So this is me, I I guess I thought that once. And you're, and I'm I'm hearing something different, so if if a sibling. Or the parent has tested. And that child is in class, you're not going to quarantine the whole class? Is that how I'm understanding it?
That's correct. That that's correct, we we don't, if, so let's just say that you and Mr. Overfelt are are siblings. And 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 let's just say that. Let's just make that. That that you, Amy Haynes, tested. And Mr. Overfelt went to his third grade class at Garfield Elementary. And and your test was positive. And Mr. Overfelt was in class in a third grade classroom. We believe that that he is positive at that point. And we will. Investigate to see what students he had. A close contact with where he possibly exposed them. And those students will be quarantined, but not the entire classroom, no ma'am. And and those practices are. In line with what we are being encouraged to do by TEA. In the in the conversations that we have with the commissioner on a weekly basis. He reiterated that fact for many meetings in a row. And and that is in line with with what we should be doing and and that's in line with what we have been doing and and still have have. Not had any real. Spread on the campuses, but again, that's just to date, ma'am.
Well, see, that, I guess that's where I can just say that, that is where the uncomfortableness comes into play. That's what, that's what makes the whole, our teachers and our, that makes us uncomfortable. That's what, that's what's making us uncomfortable right there. Because I just assumed that if my brother Josh, if I was sick and Josh went to class. He was, he's been with me in the household. More than likely, he's positive, I mean, he he goes to class, but you're not going to quarantine the whole class. You're just going to send a tracer in to figure it out, correct?
We're going to work directly with the tracers and determine who was. Exposed and then we're going to tell everybody else to monitor their their symptoms just in case. You know, we we missed something during the investigation because a lot of it is a human activity. But we believe that the tracers and and the campus contacts are thorough enough, you know, to make that determination.
I mean, I think the biggest thing that we have that will prove that is the dashboard. If we had a high. Spread on campus, it would show up on the dashboard that Sandra gave us. And right now, that's not the case, so. I think we're, we're doing okay there. Of course, we have the winter months coming and that's going to be another situation there.
Yeah, I I I understand that, I just feel like that's where, I think that's where the. That's the uncomfortableness comes into play also, so, but, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Wasn't there a case, sir, but, can you hear me?
Yes.
There a case where you said you couldn't tell where the exposed kid or the one of the virus? How close he was to any students, are you quarantining the whole class, is that what I'm reading at? The teacher and the class were quarantined?
There there, I I believe that. Two weeks ago, there was a case where it was difficult to determine, ma'am, but. It sounds very familiar and and that definitely would be an activity that we would take if if we couldn't determine. Where that had happened.
Alright, so I don't remember reading that, okay.
Anyone else?
I want to say thank you for this report because. None of staff members get the word, I know that the faculty gets the word, but not all staff members do. And this is going to help this dashboard, I appreciate it. And they will too, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll, we will continue with the, with with the presentation, we just have a couple more. Couple more slides. Okay, I believe that this is Ms. Gomez. And by the way, all the pictures on the presentation, just a commercial, they're all our pictures, I know that a lot of them look real professionally done. But they're really all items that, they were all taken on on our, in our district.
Thank you, Dr. Rios, good evening, Mr. Mesa, members of the board. The next part of the presentation tonight is our technology and instruction piece. We had essential tools that were purchased to better facilitate the instruction to meet the needs of students and staff. On the next slide, we will update you as to the number of laptops, Chromebooks. And desktops that have been deployed and what is still pending. But as we started to do that, we realized very quickly. That teachers needed just a few more items to complete. This online instruction, especially if we wanted to have it very effective. We knew about the Google platform, we knew about the Canvas platform, and then we started with actual instruction. So to date, we have deployed five hundred and ninety-seven webcams for teachers. Some teachers did not have a computer with a webcam, therefore they couldn't see their students or communicate. So that's almost six hundred devices that were deployed to teachers. In addition to date, we have deployed two hundred and three webcams for students. Some of the students had a device also that did not have the capability of the camera or the microphone. So we did purchase and deploy those. Unfortunately, we still have five hundred webcams that have not come in, they are ordered. And we already have a Google Sheet ready. We we've identified any students who need a webcam, so as soon as those come in, we are prepared to deploy them. We are checking on those and there are five hundred webcams ordered and ready to go as soon as they are received. In addition, our teachers got very used to Zoom licenses between March and August. So what the district was able to do is purchase the newest Zoom EDU. But that's actually what it's called, it's an actual license that has been developed for educators and for instruction. To date, we have deployed seven hundred and seventy-nine licenses, it says to teachers, but it's really to staff. So our nurses, our counselors, our administrators, all our teachers, our instructional aides, anybody. Who at any point in time would need to have a meeting with students, with parents. With their colleagues, has received a Zoom license and we have plenty, if if any other needs arise. We're very happy about that, the Zoom license actually allows for more effective instruction. It lets the students use the chat feature with their teachers. There's actually the polling, there's the breakout rooms, there's recording of the lessons. And all of that comes with that one Zoom license. We also knew that we had many students who did not have internet capability or connectivity. So to date, we have deployed two hundred hotspots from Sprint. And just a couple of days ago, we did receive four hundred and twelve hotspots from AT&amp;T. So those are in the process of being deployed, the first two hundred went out already. These four hundred and twelve, again, we have a Google document, the principals updated live daily. It it's not via email, it's just checking a link and it's constantly being updated. So as the need arises, they list the student and we have somebody deliver. If it's not somebody from curriculum and instruction, it is somebody from the technology department, but we correlate it. We collaborate together to make sure that those hotspots are issued to the students as soon as they're needed. In addition, we did receive shields from the state, the face shields. The district also purchased them. We also had the Education Foundation who purchased some for teachers. So we do have face shields, but the need came up for some face masks with a clear front. So we had some teachers, especially our face-to-face early lit teachers who said, my children have to see my mouth move. I cannot hide behind a a solid mask. So we were able to purchase five hundred of those masks. And to date, we have issued out four hundred and thirty-one to the teachers who primarily are working face-to-face who requested one. All of this is done through communication through the principal. We send it out, they send us the information and then we make sure that it's getting into their hands. So those are some of the added features that have been purchased just to get instruction going. The. Does it come here, the next slide? Yes. The next slide, board members, will show you where we are with devices or technology. You'll see here that we issued out two thousand five hundred desktops. Those are currently in our SFDR inventory, those went out to students. We've issued out one thousand six hundred laptops that were currently in the SFDR inventory to students. Because of those devices going out, we did know that some students did not need a hotspot, they actually were able. To get connectivity through Spectrum. So a hundred and fifty-five households in Del Rio have received their Spectrum connectivity. And that helps all of the students and all of the household, that is something the district has done. We did receive two hundred Dell Attitudes and those are in the progress of being deployed to different students. Again, based on the information that we have of who needs one. On order, we have some Dell Chromebooks, two thousand eight hundred and twenty. And we have some Lenovo Chromebooks, also eight hundred. So so you're looking at about thirty-six hundred devices that are on order. And should be coming in, I heard Dr. Rios say earlier, we're looking at possibly December. But as soon as they come in, we will have that technology available as well. And Ms. Sylvia Owens did talk earlier about the Education Foundation. And all the generous donations that the community assisted with. Currently, we do have a hundred and twenty-four. Donated laptops, a hundred and twenty-four students in our community have received. Or in the process of receiving, they have been identified to receive one of the initial hundred and twenty-four laptops. But because of the generous donations, we were able to purchase. Or allowed to purchase forty-four more. So that's going to be a hundred and sixty-eight students in our district who will be receiving a laptop. Courtesy of the work through the Education Foundation and our community. And again, these laptops are theirs, it's not something they have to give back at any point in time. This is something that that will be theirs. And on a very special note, I did receive an email today. From a principal who said that the child who received one said that not only would he be eternally grateful. For this opportunity, but he can't wait to pay it forward. And I thought, wow, that's an elementary student already thinking about. Doing this for somebody else at at some time, a very generous thought. So that is the additional technology that we have purchased for the district, if you all have any questions, I can answer them. If not, we'll provide that in in the print that we're going to give you, the printed copy.
Questions from board members? No questions, I want to thank you.
Thank you.
Leave. Mr. Henges, I'm sorry, this is Amy. We're almost done, board members.
Now, we're going to have to take a five-minute break after this.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, once again. This slide just gives you a a quick overall glimpse of our food nutrition service at this time. Between September and through last Friday. We just want to let you know that the total number of meals that have been served between the elementary and secondary campuses. And for breakfast and lunch is a hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-four. And just to kind of put that. Into context, the same time period from last year. We had served three hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and sixteen meals. So we are serving about fifty percent of the meals that we serve during the same time as last year. This breakdown just kind of shows you how those breakfasts are being served. At this time, all breakfasts are being, both at the elementary and secondary are being served in the classrooms. And then lunches are being served, about five percent are actually eating in the cafeteria. The rest are eating within their classrooms. And then we also have the curbside pickup meals as well as the four bus stops that we are. as well as the four bus stops that we are still serving at this time. Questions?
Questions?
So my question, Dr. Real, is when will we know on the reimbursement that is still up in the air?
The reimbursement from the Department of Agriculture. Yes, sir. That literature just came across my desk today. We'll follow up in the next few days to see if there is going to be any funding opportunities, because as Ms. Child just pointed out, there's only, we're only serving fifty percent of the meals, yet our personnel is close to a hundred percent. And we have to figure out a way how to make up that difference in the money. So hopefully, we'll have some good news. As soon as we do, we'll share it with you all.
You know, when I hear that, it's the same thing with, for example, forty or forty-five percent, you know, attendance face-to-face and the administrators that we have. You know, the different campuses that we have a lot of administrative staff. We don't have enough students on campus. And so that kind of very much mirrors what is going on with the lunch program as well, because you have two principals at one campus and four assistant principals. Again, the workload is much less.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Mesa, that is, that's a perception, but the work of monitoring instruction, whether it's online or face-to-face, continues to be there, and more so because right now, we're going through improving online instruction. And that requires a lot of observations and coaching. And next month, we will give you all a review of what we're doing with NIET. That's the National Institute for Education Technology, and all the staff development that we're providing. So the classrooms that are being visited by administrators is the same, whether it's online or face-to-face. I will say that discipline is considerably down because of the students, but obviously, the monitoring on campus increases dramatically. So I would agree with you that it's easier because there's less discipline. But you can imagine the increased monitoring to ensure that everybody is following the rules and observing of the classrooms online is increased. So unfortunately, we take one for the other, but anytime we get a chance to to not renew, or I'm trying, the words, that is a totally wrong word. To replace vacancies, we'll definitely look at those.
Now, yeah, I guess I'm making my message clear that as board members, we don't like to hear the word furlough. You know, and that's it's something that our employees are dear to our hearts and just whatever we can do to alleviate that.
Absolutely. Yeah, we we don't, we'd hate to have to go down that path, and we'll definitely keep the board posted every month on expenses and state agencies and federal agencies open up their purses to provide some of this additional funding. The cafeteria is a perfect example. So absolutely, we'll continue to update the board and and look for every possible funding mechanism so that we don't have to do that. You know, Mr. Mesa, because at the end of the day, if we were to furlough anybody, that comes out of our own Tasby insurance. So all we're doing is increasing our premiums for the next year. It's not like they go get into this federal pocketbook. They get paid unemployment from Tasby, which is still our money. So we definitely don't want to go that road if we don't have to.
Any questions from board members? Are we done with the report? Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Probably just another five minutes, Mr. Mesa, but it's up to you. If you all want to take a break now, we can continue it afterwards, whatever your wishes are.
If you can go on five minutes, that's fine. We'll take a five-minute break after that.
Okay, so then the last two people are Mr. Hengay and then the athletic physician. So I take it back. It'll be five minutes apiece. What would you like to do, sir?
We'll take a five-minute break now.
Okay, so then, Mr. Hengay, you'll be next.
Back at nine oh five.
Thank you.
Okay, we're reconvening into... We didn't go into executive session. Then we took a little break. So we're back. Again, we have Mr. Hengay presenting.
Good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Real, members of the board. For our portion or section here, we will...
You're muted, Mr. Hengay.
About that. Yes, good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Real, members of the board. For this part of the presentation, we'll look at some of the accommodations that we've facilitated at our different campuses to be able to help provide an environment that is as clean as we can possibly have, considering the circumstances. Some of the things that we've done for classroom accommodations include increased runtime for the heating and air conditioning system. We've opened fresh air intakes to one hundred percent to increase airflow, basically just to keep that airflow circulating throughout the campuses. Increased runtime of sink faucets, making sure that when the faucets, because they are on timers, when they're pressed down, that they do keep the water running for over twenty seconds to be able to get good hand washing done within all the restrooms. We've also had an installation of sanitizer pumps that we've deployed to the classrooms at elementaries, as well as not all of them at secondary yet. We're in the process of that. But we have gone... I think we've done a very good attempt at this point as far as deploying out the sanitizer pumps and making them available at entryways to the campuses, high-traffic areas, and then, of course, classrooms where students are currently attending. The cafeteria tables for under student accommodations. Today, we've built a hundred and eighty-six plexiglass partition units to section off the cafeteria tables. Here's a picture at Del Rio High School of their cafeteria and some of the dividers that our maintenance staff have put together. We've also done some dividers for the classroom desks, which we'll be showing in the next slide. A total of two hundred and thirty-six of those units have been deployed. And these have been built by our maintenance department as a cost-reduction measure plus availability, because we found issues with both. Extremely high costs on getting these already made, and the lead times were very lengthy. So to accommodate that, our maintenance team really pulled together, and they're continuing to work on these on a daily basis yet. It's just we've done most of the deployment at this time. Staff accommodations, we've reached out to all the campuses and produced teacher-desplexi glass dividers at a sum of two hundred and sixty-four units, as well as the secretaries installing plexiglass dividers, and that's roughly eighty units that we've done thus far. Next slide. These are some samples of what we've done in different areas. We have Del Rio High School, that's the main entryway when you first come in. There's all the secretaries that line up against their work from that area. They have some protection from parents that may come in, or vendors, or just any type of visitors that come to the campus. The classrooms, we've been working directly with each school to be able to find out what it is that they were looking for. We've gone so far as to customize different divider solutions for the classrooms. So basically, the principals let us know what works at their campus for how these classrooms are being laid out, and then we're accommodating whatever type of dividers we need to. In this case here, we running out of materials several times. We were able to put together these PVC frames, and with help from the warehouse, we were able to do like a shrink wrap over them to work as a divider. Now they're working on going back and putting something a little more permanent in place. Unfortunately, we weren't able to do a plexiglass solution on these desk dividers. So we came up with something that we felt would be much better than nothing at all. The computer lab stations. This picture here shows a divider that was built to kind of section the computer labs, and of course, all the computer labs across the district right now. We're using every other computer to give that social distancing between students. Being able to store the furniture has been a challenge, so rather than move the furniture and run the risk of damage happening to it, as, you know, we see how this ends up working out here in the future, a lot of the areas, what we've done is we've just taped off chairs and said, okay, you know, every other student can sit here. That way, we can keep the furniture in the classroom. And, you know, then, when the time comes, you know, we would still be able to take advantage of using that furniture. So we're trying to be mindful of not knowing how long this is going to go on, but also make sure that we have that social distancing in place today to keep the students that are returning to school safe, as safe as possible. Our custodial team has done a fabulous job of implementing some disinfecting techniques to date. Where our custodial coordinator has gone through and given disinfectant training to include the personal protective equipment that should be worn during the... We call them fog machines. They're really spraying disinfectant into the air to be able to kill any fog machines, they're really spraying disinfectant into the air to be able to kill any terms maybe in classrooms. There is a process that goes into that as far as mixing the chemicals, the operation of the machine, and what areas specifically at campuses are considered high impact that may need a little more care outside of just a normal disinfectant. Each campus has, I believe, two of these units, our custodial staff is, we've been working with them to readjust some schedules. So at 5:00 at night, you can pretty much go anywhere in the district and we have disinfecting going on using these foggy machines at all of our campuses. And it, on an average, it's taking anywhere between two and four hours a night just to get these disinfected. So when staff and students come back in in the morning, everything is just fresh and ready to go for the day. The, yes, right here, yes, transportation. Transportation is also doing the same disinfecting process at the end of every day as well. A lot of the techniques that our custodians are using have moved over into the transportation department, just to make sure that buses are staying clean. This slide here, we've identified the ridership statistics. Currently with the students coming back for face-to-face, our maximum capacity per bus is 24 students. That's allowing one per seat at this time to be able to give some social distancing. The number of routes are targeted at 39 with total number of riders is at 629. That number seems to be fluctuating a lot, what we've seen this last week, so we anticipate it's going to go up a little bit more as time goes on. Historically, our transportation department transports about 2,500 students. So you can see that right now ridership is, you know, much lower than what it typically would be, but we have had some students that are being added almost daily now, so again, it will go up over time, we're pretty sure, we're confident. Route descriptions, this is a detailed outline of what we're seeing as far as the routes. Every day our route coordinators and transportation director are working to fine-tune the routes, but we do have some like 20 to 24 students where right now we have one route that would pick up students within that number, 15 to 19 students would be nine routes, 10 to 14 students, 16 routes, 5 to 9 students, 24 routes, and 0 to 4, 19 routes. So totaling all that up, we're looking at about 69 routes. So the routes are definitely not what we've seen in the past, and it's caused us to make a lot more trips in order to facilitate the 48 passenger bus can only transport 24 students at a time right now.
President, members of the board, incidentally, the 629 current riders, the survey that we did during the summer asking how many students would want to, would need transportation was right close to that number, it's, the survey was highly accurate. And I bet in the next couple of weeks as we increase riders, it'll be right at the amount that was initially indicated, so that's kind of what we expected. The last part of the presentation will be athletics, that will be a brief presentation, but before we go there, Mr. Mesa, are there any questions regarding transportation for Mr. Hengay or any of the Plexiglas dividers that were constructed?
Amy, that's a question.
Yes, sir, I just had some concerns, you know, I think I've also talked to doctors about the wrap. Now, you know, I'm getting some concerns that the kids can't see, so how hard is it to switch it to Plexiglas and is it hard and, I mean, because now they can't see, now they can't see out the, at the wrap that you're using, that we're using to protect him. That's the concern I'm getting now is that the kids can't see out of that wrap. And then I had, I'm sorry, Dr. Rios, and then I just have this other one about the Plexi, the Plexiglas. So you said that you are working on trying to get teachers that built as well?
The, so first on the dividers, today we ordered some thicker, very clear plastic so that we can replace the shrink wrap that we have out there, but, you know, initially we had to build a whole lot of them and we had to produce them as fast as we could. Now we're producing less per week so we can go back and help retrofit some of those with just a harder plastic. And Mr. Carcasey was able to find what we needed and he's now placed the order. So as soon as that comes in, we'll start making those replacements and that'll be very clear. There are some classes, depending on how they situate the desks, where the current material does become an issue. In terms of the Plexiglas dividers for the teachers, where they have asked, we have provided that Plexiglas divider and we can continue to do that.
Yes, and I know some of the teachers have already set up their own kind of barrier with the shower curtain and the rod and stuff, but I just wanted to know if that was available to them, the Plexiglas, if they wanted to get Plexiglas, Plexiglas.
They have made a whole lot of those dividers and will continue to do as they're being asked, so yes, they are available to them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mesa, thank you, Dr. Rios.
Okay, anyone else? Ms. Wood?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Hengay and Mr. Carcasey for all the efforts in putting Plexiglas throughout the district and trying to assist as much as possible and as fast as possible. So thank you for your department here.
Thank you.
It's a lot of work above and beyond, thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Rios?
Yes, sir, the last slide belongs to the athletic director, asked to be here at 6:30 and three hours later he gets to present, so I'm sorry, Coach Smith, but you're on.
That's okay, I was missing the Cowboys game. Now, President Mesa, board members, Dr. Rios, I just want to give you a brief update on what's going on athletically. Today would be the start of our fifth week of athletics. We're only doing varsity-only athletics, volleyball's played five matches, cross-country's had five meets, team tennis has had five matches and they clinched a playoff spot this past Saturday. Wednesday they'll play for third place against Eagle Pass. Football's played one game, golf hasn't had any tournaments or competitions yet. Girls' basketball will start this Wednesday and boys' basketball the following Wednesday. All of our practices are videotaped as Dr. Rios I think mentioned earlier, and that the main purpose is to be able to trace anything that is going on in our programs. Our daily procedures are as soon as kids leave their vehicles, they're reminded to wear a mask and socially distance because we have our coaching staff spread out along all of the routes to practices. They must send in a, use an app to send Doc Dixon the answers to three of our COVID questions. If they answer yes to any of those, they're not allowed in practice. Once they get to practice, Doc will check their temperatures and then ask those three questions again verbally to make sure that we don't have somebody slip through, you know, and get into our practice. When they leave practice, they're escorted out to their vehicles or to their parents. Coaches are remaining in the parking lots until every kid is picked up. So we're trying to make sure that all of our kids are doing things right, and they are most of the time. We've got great kids, great coaches, and they're all doing their job. Our students are encouraged to wear masks at all time on our out-of-town trips. Before they load up on a bus, we do a baggage check, we check temperatures again, we ask the three questions again so that if anything's changed, you know, throughout the day, that we don't let someone on the bus that maybe has developed some symptoms. Our equipment is sanitized as it's being used before somebody else uses it. In our sports that involve balls, which most of them do, our balls are specific to groups and eventually we do get into where we have to use, you know, one ball to scrimmage, but all that is sanitized after being used. Our outside weight room is sanitized at the end of the day and as well as our inside weight room, which we've started to use, all of our equipment is sanitized by our, not only our coaching staff, kids help us wipe things down, but also our custodians come in from 12:00 to 9:00 PM and they're able to spray things down once everybody's left so that when we start the next day that everything is nice and clean. We are live streaming, streaming all home events, that includes tennis, our cross-country meet was a live stream, which I don't know that's ever happened, and I've been involved in cross-country and track for many years, so that was neat to see. Our volleyball games each Saturday are livestreamed by our media department in Reno. Our home football game, which will be not this Friday, but next Friday, will be livestreamed by possibly three radio stations and our school district, so everybody's going to be able to see it if they can't get into the game. We've gone to online ticketing, contactless ticketing, we're not handling any money from spectators coming in or buying tickets, it's all online, which has been great. We've used it for two weeks now for volleyball competitions and it's worked extremely well. I'm sure that's going to continue once we get past all this COVID-19. I mentioned our routes, which is letter H, how we bring kids in and temperature check them and ask them questions multiple times during the day. And that's all I have, any questions?
Really appreciate you doing a report for us and we're looking forward to a home game here coming up this week.
Next week.
Next, next week?
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things that come to mind is, you know, as I play the contact sports and say football, do they wear a shield, a clear mask?
We bought 1,000 gators for our athletes and right now we've got a little over 150 athletes, so some of them have two of these gators, and yes, if you'll go watch volleyball game, they either got a gator on or they have a mask on. In play, it may come down, but they do wear it most of the time. Football also, we bought some clear shields, it really just covers their eyes and part of their nose, so the gator is used most of the time. And when play is not happening, they are reminded and encouraged, you know, to pull their gators up and keep it on as much as possible. On the sidelines, during timeouts, they're encouraged to pull their gators up as the coaches are talking to them. And our coaches have done a great job, they wear theirs 99.9% of the time around their kids.
Great, great. And the other question, Dr. Rios, I don't know how we can help out booster clubs, they do so much to help out with expenses during the year and usually they related to travel and things of that sort, but we're not doing a lot of travel, so how can they be creative in raising the funds that they usually donate back to the program?
Well, the, Coach Smith, can you just share a little bit about the transportation that we use this weekend for the football game going out of town?
Right, we're about half-capacity on all of our buses, whether they're charter buses or our yellow buses or activity buses. So on a yellow bus that'll normally seat 48, we put 24 on there. Charter buses that'll handle 56, we only put 28 people, so that there's only one person per seat. We've even gone a little bit further in trying to lower our numbers to 21 on yellow buses so that we have the back four seats kind of reserved for anybody that may be having some kind of symptoms or they're not feeling well, that we can isolate them away from everybody else that's on the bus. So, yeah, we're half-capacity so that we have, you know, as much distancing as possible on a bus.
But in terms of the payment of the buses, in the past, some of the booster organizations were providing extra funding so that we would not use our yellow buses. My understanding is that right now we're absorbing all the costs for the buses, and that's what I wanted you to verify.
Yes, yes, we are, but actually our charter companies have reduced their rates about $800 to $1,000 per bus, which has helped us out with maybe some of the costs that the booster clubs would normally help us out with.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else, questions? I hear, I see none. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Just a, just a wrap-up question. For the record, I'm the one who requested this, so sorry for putting you all through two hours of listening to all of that.
Three, three hours.
Three hours, three hours of listening, sorry, so that was me. And I'm going to say a very unpopular thing, very unpopular opinion, I think that if we're asking our teachers to come in contact with students there, that maybe it's time to start holding our meetings in the auditorium again instead of over this, I'll be the first to sit at the dais if they're having to teach kids to come in contact. Our auditorium's pretty dang big, so I know we have exemption from the governor right now, but just an unpopular opinion, if y'all want to think about it.
Okay with that, because I'm in the classroom already, so I'm okay with that, we can go back out there and do what we have to do.
I just want to say this report is, you know, is very much, you know, needed as far as information from all the different departments, and I'm amazed at all the work that has gone on in preparation for this and as we continue the coming months, it's going to get even more critical with, again, the flu season coming on. But thank you again, Mr. Orfield. We'll go in with the agenda, consent agenda is next, there's some minutes of some meetings and also the donations, for the sake of time, we will not read the donations, but those donations will be posted on the website. If anyone wishes to pull out an item from the consent agenda or has a question, would you do that now, Mr. Orfield?
Yeah, I just, I just had a quick question on 9F dot two. It's about replacing the engine on one of our buses, and I know it says, because of what's in there, it has to be a Mercedes-Benz engine, which is common in those buses. I guess my only question is, is it a OEM crate engine or is it a remanufactured engine there, because warranties will differ on something that's OEM crate versus a reman engine.
For that price, I bet it's a remanufactured, but it's a remanufactured.
Reman, okay, so, or is Thomas Bus Gulf Coast going to warrant it for X amount of months or miles or?
I think it's usually a year, but we'll get that exact time provided.
Okay, that's the main thing, that I was just wondering if it was a reman or an OEM, so, okay, thank you.
So would you be able to give us that information as far as warranty?
Yes, sir, well, Mr. Hengay will research and will provide that in our board update.
Anyone else with any other item? Okay, one action will approve all items on the consent agenda. Is there a motion for adoption here, Mr. Orfield? Is there a second to the motion? Okay, Amy Hance, hold those in favor, we'll start with Ms. Diana Gonzalez in favor. Ms. Webb in favor, Amy Haynes in favor, Mr. Orfield in favor, and myself in favor. Motion passes. Again, uh we appreciate every donation that was made to our district from either individuals or organizations. And as always, we are grateful for the support and help that we give to the organizations, to the campuses and programs that we have within our district. Next item that we have is administration. Item ten A. Consideration to approve the adoption of the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one superintendent's evaluation calendar, Sandra Hernandez.
Good evening, uh once again, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. This evening, I'm present uh sharing with you, presenting uh in accordance with the commissioner's rules. Each district must establish an annual calendar for the appraisal process of the superintendent. Superintendent's evaluation calendar provides a timeline of activities and processes, including goal-setting procedure and defining expectations of the superintendent. And one or more formative conferences and a summative conference, which the board and superintendent discuss uh the final evaluation findings. This year, uh the proposed draft includes a modified timeline. Um of course, as a result of the pandemic, uh we've made some adjustments and changes and as well because of the May board election. Uh many of the required activities, which traditionally began as early as the start of the school year in September, have been reassigned. And recommended to be moved at a different time um after the November election. And uh there are several uh activities, important activities, such as the board team of eight training um and the establishment of the board's goals. So for those reasons, uh we're making a recommendation to make uh a change and um. Uh and provide uh uh just a a restructured uh timeline for the superintendent's evaluation calendar.
In our handbook.
It is.
Any question from board members? It's pretty much the same timeline, pretty much with the those changes. Um then I'll entertain a motion for approval. Is there a motion, Mrs. Webb? Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Gonzalez, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez? In favor, Ms. Webb? In favor, Ms. Amy Haynes? In favor, Mr. Orfield? Favor and myself in favor. Calendar's approved. Sandra, the only question I have is um. I I wanted to have a a board self-evaluation and I don't see that item on the agenda here.
Though, uh Mr. Mesa, the the calendar items, I'm sorry, the articles that we received. Um we have them printed and we will be giving them out to the board so they can review. Uh and then whatever communication needs to happen, we'll facilitate that through a board update, but we got that after we had posted the agenda, so it was kind of hard to do that. Uh we apologize if that was your intent, uh but we'll definitely hand out the articles today and then communicate any expectations through our weekly updates.
Sure, we we have plenty of time. Normally, it's done in the summer, but because we closed down everything, I wanted to have um. A self-evaluation of the board and just so in the coming years, it would be of use. To make sure that we improve, you know, again, everything that we do on the board. So there's some readings that were distributed tonight. Um I believe the self-evaluation is there. And and um at some point, I know that there'll be a meeting sometime, Dr. Rios, that we possibly could do this before. Uh the next board meeting.
We can we can uh have a brief workshop, Mr. Mesa. I I really don't um. Know of any scheduled meeting, but we can definitely uh coordinate a workshop. We'll uh ask for some dates.
And and the intent was that the current board do the self-evaluation, so, you know, we're in between elections and all that, but. It it's a tool to help the board better understand the role and improve whatever we can improve for next year. That's the whole intent, so um I guess we'll continue with this for the following month. Sandra, there's there's some important readings. I- if the board members could could look at that, again, um. You know, this is an election year and unfortunately. You know, we have so many candidates that are running that I wish we could keep this board forever, but. If, you know, whatever happens, this instrument is intended for improvement uh for the coming years. And so if you could read uh those articles and then do a self-eva- uh evaluation, it'll help us. Um improve uh again the 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 board and um what we do in in our roles as board members. Okay, all right, we'll continue with um item nine H one. Consideration to prove second reading of TASB policy update one one five affecting policies D I A local, E P local, F F H. Local and F F G local, Sandra Hernandez.
Uh Mr. Mesa, I believe that you're reading this uh second reading and we are doing the first reading. Um just right after the, you'll find it right after the superintendent's evaluation calendar.
With the second reading of policy revisions.
It should be the first reading of TASB policy update one fifteen affecting policies E F. Local board policies, E I local, academic achievement, F D local admissions. F E B local, attendance, attendance accounting, F N G student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaints and grievances, and G F. Public complaints.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Wanna make sure, does everyone have that?
Yes, we do.
In their packet? Okay, great. So during the district's board policy meeting uh that was held in September, a total of twelve local policies were introduced. For a review of the TAS- TASB's policy update one fifteen. As a result of the review, four of the local policies were presented for their first reading in September, which uh we did approve the second reading today. And six are being recommended for consideration and approval this month. These are the remaining policies, except for one that's still under review. A revision to B F local clarifies that the district's legally referenced policies are not adopted by the board. It just simply says that. Look legal policies are not adopted by the board. We only uh the board only uh adopts changes to the local policy. The administrative code rules permit districts in accordance with local district policy to award course credit proportionately. To a student who successfully completes only half of a course. And this new board policy provision has been recommended to address this option under E I local. The new administrative codes effective March the thirtieth, twenty twenty, address transition assistance for highly mobile students who are homeless. Or who are in substitute care and require districts to adopt local policy under F D local. So we use those to assist awarding credit to a student who is homeless or in substitute care. And and this is prior to enrolling in or transferring to the school district. In the F E B local policy, the revisions to this policy is on attendance accounting, address the amended administrative code rules that delete the reference to taking attendance during the second. Or the fifth instructional hour. So you'll see that language has been changed. And you'll see it referred to simply as the official attendance-taking time. During the campus's instructional day, so it's not referenced to a particular period. Under board policies, F N G local, which address student and parent complaints and grievances, and G F local, which is the public complaints, both include a change. That specifies that when a person that's filing a complaint regarding of your refusal to enter to entry to or an ejection from a property based on the education code. Thirty-seven point one zero five shall be permitted to address the board within ninety calendar days, and the only change here. Is the word calendar, so rather than just saying ninety school days, so you'll see calendar days is specified. And this is the exception um to how the other timelines were calculated in the policy, which were based on business days.
We have changes highlighted in our packet.
That is correct. You'll see the changes noted in blue or the strike-throughs in red.
Any questions from board members? So we have one more left after this.
That is correct. We just have one more.
Great. Okay, then and no questions. We'll ask for a motion for approval. Do you want to read the recommendation?
I'll recommend the recommendation just to make certain. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approve the first reading. Of TASB policy update one one five affecting policies E F local, board policies, E I local, academic achievement, F D local, admissions. F E B local, attendance and attendance accounting, F N G local, student rights and responsibilities, student and parent complaints and grievances. And G F local, public complaints is presented by the board policy review committee.
Now, I'll ask for the recommendation of Mr. Mr. Orfield. Is there a second to the motion? Amy Haynes, thank you for reading the recommendation and motion and second has been done. All in favor, Ms. Gonzalez? In favor, Mrs. Webb? In favor, Amy Haynes? In favor, Mr. Orfield? In favor, myself? Motion passes again for. The revision of um those policies.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next item we have is curriculum instruction, item eleven A on your agenda. Consideration to prove the resolution regarding extracurricular status. Of four-H organizations, Ida Gomez.
Good evening, again, Mr. Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. The State Board of Education passed an amendment um under nineteen T A C one twenty-nine twenty-one. Requirements for student attendance accounting for state funding purposes. This allows public school students to be considered in attendance when participating in off-campus activities. With adjunct staff members um of the school district. This amendment provides local school boards the opportunity to recognize county extension agents as adjunct staff members. And to count students participating in four-H extension extracurricular activities. In attendance for foundational school program purposes. Valverde County is requesting adjunct staff member status for county extension agents for the school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. The following two faculty members are eligible for participation in the teacher-retirement system of Texas. And do have a minimum of a bachelor's degree. This is the second year that um we have come to the board for approval to make these two. Individuals adjunct faculty so that our students can participate in the extracurricular activities and be counted present. Are there any questions, Mr. Mesa, or anyone from the board?
I think everyone understands pretty much this resolution. We've had it for years and and I know that um before. We did not have these teachers in place, um but we we count it for attendance, so. Um it's it's been even better for the last two years now.
Thank you.
No questions? No questions. Recommendation, please.
Yes, sir. It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees recognize the above-listed county extension. Agents as adjunct staff members and to count students participating in the four-H extension educational activities. In attendance for foundational school program purposes. It is also requested that Dr. Pedro Rios, superintendent of schools, and the San Felipe del Rio C I S D school board president. Sign the adjunct faculty agreement and the resolution regarding extracurricular status of the four-H organization as presented.
But the recommendation from administration is your motion for approval. Mrs. Webb, seconded by Mr. Orfield, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez in favor, Mr. Webb? In favor, Amy Haynes in favor, Mr. Orfield in favor, and myself in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item we have is human resources, item fourteen A. Consideration to prove the inter-local agreement between San Felipe del Rio C I S D and Valverde Regional Medical Center, Ida Garcia.
Yes, good evening, President Mesa, Dr. Rios and members of the board. Earlier, we presented information on air evac. Which also is an inter-local agreement between San Felipe del Rio C I S D and Valverde Regional Medical Center. At this question, if there's no uh at this time, if there's no other questions, I can go ahead and read the recommendation.
Questions from board members? And again, this is something that is is of high importance. Um. I know I visited this item with Dr. Rios and um. If we have participation by our employees, it pretty much pays for itself within. Um more than likely, seven, eight employees. If we're paying somewhere between ten thousand per employee. I think the only thing that I have questions on is why the last amount was eighty-something thousand dollars. And he's trying to resolve that, but we do not have an answer at this point. Because I I know in the past, Dr. Rios. Where we've seen an enormous amount from one year to the next in regarding to expenses from. Medical issues, medical um I guess billing. Um I don't know how the insurance responds to this, but if they're covered. They should not submit an amount that large. It's almost as if we didn't have an M O U with them.
Mr. Mesa, the in in every case, you know, they bill uh what they're gonna bill. Uh and that's that holds true for any hospital or or doctor. They bill what they're gonna bill, but then for every procedure, whether it be a surgery or or whether it be a. Uh air evac, uh we have a negotiated amount. Uh but every doctor and every hospital bills what they would normally bill. It's up to our insurance. Uh or or our administrators to only pay the negotiated amount. Now, in this case, they paid above the negotiated amount and it was Ms. Garcia that caught their mistake. I'm assuming it was Ms. Garcia. I don't think it was it was our consultant. She was just being vigilant and now we have to uh go back and fix it. But they're gonna bill what they would normally bill, just like every hospital and every doctor. It's our obligation. And in this case, our our administrator, Etna, to only pay the negotiated amount. Uh so but we're we're gonna stay on it and we're gonna fix it. And we'll definitely let the board know when it's fixed.
When I hear from board members, because again, this is an important issue and I don't wanna leave employees, you know, with um. A substantial amount of money to pay in the event of an emergency. And so it's it's critical that we make a good decision here. Um as I mentioned, I I did contact Eagle Pass. They don't have anything in place like that. Evaldi is building a brand-new hospital. They don't have anything like that. Employees, if they want it, they're paying fourteen dollars a month. Laredo doesn't have anything like that either. They have that service, but their insurance is the one that pays. They don't pay the copay for employees. Um. The reason I was questioning this is again, anytime we hear the word furloughing staff and employees. You know, we're trying to do everything we can to avoid that and so. Um but I do not want to leave the employees paying an enormous amount in case of an emergency, so I don't wanna get your your feelings on this. Mr. Orfield?
I agree that in in the coming legislative session. Um there are some scary things coming down as far as funding goes and and I understand. Completely the the worry on that and us wanting to do everything we can to. completely the worry on that and us wanting to do everything we can to keep all of our employees with us. We also know, and you can research it, that individuals because of crushing medical debt go in and many times have to bankrupt themselves, have to file for bankruptcy because of crushing medical debt. Or they get in and they just could never get out from underneath it. And a seventy thousand dollar, you know, seventy thousand dollar helicopter ride to San Antonio or San Angelo, that's expensive. You know, I was blown away just by, you know, what it costs to bring my two children into the world and how much it, over the course of six years, how much more expensive it got. And even with insurance, and there was still what was left over that we had to pay. But I cannot imagine a seventy, sixty thousand dollar helicopter ride. And yes, it's a chunk of money, but it benefits everyone in Valverde County. It's not like we're going and saying, oh, this is only going to benefit school district employees. It benefits everyone in the, inside the county, inside the county, if loaned from within the county. So I see it as as an item that's important to provide for employees, particularly, you know, our hourly, who don't make what our teachers make. You know, you go in and have to take a seventy thousand dollar helicopter ride and this isn't in place. What you face after that is just horrendous. So I'm all for extending and continuing this and have been for it since day one when it was brought to us.
Thank you, sir. And I'm glad there's so many things that, you know, I heard the report and one thing that caught my attention is that the other entities have approved it and if we don't, they don't come back and ask us to be part of it, you know, and so we lose that privilege. The other thing that I was thinking about is, you know, we know that the insurance, you know, we were able to administration step in and pay the cost that normally would go to the employee. We're doing that this year, but next year is kind of questionable to see if we're going to pass on that cost to the employees, but you're right that any hourly wage employee that takes an unexpected trip to the hospital could be, you know, have a lien on property and because of the great expense that they're incurred. So, as I mentioned, you know, with a couple of trips like that, it pays for itself pretty much and the fact that the other entities of authority approved it, I think it would be to our privilege to continue this, but we continue to look for revenue to make sure that that we help our employees with either insurance and/or with keeping their job. But I do want to hear from the other board members. Mrs. Webb?
I I know the importance of the air vac, the importance that it does for our teachers and not just our teachers, but the whole community as well. But I also wanted to keep in mind that I wouldn't want to see any, any of our staff furloughed, especially the lower entity of our staff, like cafeteria workers, custodians. I wouldn't want to see any of those furloughed. Those are the ones that make the least amount of money. And I think that something like this would be beneficial to them as well. So.
Because we kind of have to balance that and I, for one, you know, think the same way that they, they're the ones that make the least money and so it's not going to be favorable for them to get unemployment and things of that sort. So this is why, you know, I'm looking at that expense and saying, what else could we do? But I also see the need for that as well. As Ms. Thorofelt mentioned.
These are there to help our employees, but we also have to keep in mind and look at other revenues so that we don't furlough anybody. And just like we're not furloughing teachers, they have less students. They do extra work would be online. We're not furloughing assistant principals. The principals, even though they have half of the student body and they're monitoring teachers in the classroom, but the ones that are doing the most work are the teachers doing class instruction face-to-face and online. So we need to stop and look before we even discuss any furloughs for any any of our paraprofessionals or auxiliary staff. But I am in agreement that this is an important aspect of what they need as well.
It's an expense that can help an employee with saving the life of an employee and and so this is why it's critical for us to make a good decision on this. Anyone else? Amy?
I agree. I think we should keep the air vac because it is very important just to the staff, to the family members as well, the community, like we said. So and I really don't want to have to furlough anybody, but I really do, I do think this is very important to have.
Thank you, Amy. Anyone else? Ms. Gonzalez? I can't hear you.
Can I read my lips, mister? Can you read my lips? Okay, I said, I didn't understand why the school district is paying so much more money, but then they explain it was a tax base. That's like, we're paying more. This is forty-four percent compared to the other people. And I still don't get, I don't think they answered the question as to why we will pass and the other school districts don't pay. Was that what ever answered? Mr. Mesa?
Yes, I asked that question and he did not answer, except that the copay is passed on to the employee.
Mr. Dr. Rios, you going to say something?
I was going to say the same thing, ma'am. But they were given the option, they didn't reach an agreement and that option is no longer on the table. But they do pass the expense of copay on to the employees.
Okay, so is it a ten thousand dollar bill with insurance? Or, explain that again, please?
Yes, ma'am. If you recall, a few years ago, when we were having a whole lot of questions about the solvency of our self-funded insurance program, we looked at different ways of saving money. It was at that time that we dismissed our consultant and then went out and hired Brown and Brown. In that process, the then CFO and I reviewed just everything about the insurance and we found some areas where we could save. The biggest area was the stop-loss insurance. And another area was then just reducing the amount that the district would pay, the negotiated amount we would pay. And at that point, we found out that we were paying a whole lot for air flights. And then we just lowered the amount to ten thousand dollars. So you can see in the presentation that Ms. Garcia and Michael Keaton made earlier, you can see that from one year to the next, the amount dropped significantly. Well, it dropped significantly because we negotiated that price ourselves and ended up paying a whole lot less. Again, they decreased the amount that the, the copay amount, but they, they didn't decrease that much. So that was the difference. It's, we negotiated that to help keep our insurance solvent.
Thanks.
I think, Dr. Rios, the only other thing that I couldn't understand, if they're having more flights, they're collecting more revenue. And so I couldn't understand, if they're doing a lot more flights, why are they charging more?
His explanation, when we had that discussion, Mr. Mesa, he explained that the more flights they take, the more money they have to write off. In other words, the more hit the insurance takes. So they're claiming that they're losing more money on every flight, so they're just trying to find a balance like all the insurances that have raised their rates on this art. That's what he said. He said, the more flights they take, the larger amount they have to write off, so they're looking to offset some of it.
Anyone else? At this point, I just want to say it's critical for our staff to be able to have this available. So you want to read the recommendation, please?
Yes, sir. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approved the inter-local agreement between San Felipe del Rio CISD and Valverde Regional Medical Center and for Dr. Rios, Superintendent of School to sign the inter-local agreement as presented.
Heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval? Mrs. Webb? Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Thorofelt? All those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez? Favor, Mrs. Webb? In favor, Amy Haines? In favor, Ms. Thorofelt? In favor, myself in favor. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item that we have is Item 14B. Consideration to approve employee job description and evaluation forms for the following. PTEC Counselor revised. Del Rio Care's Coordinator revised. ISS Monitor revised. Are there, Garcia?
Yes, sir. In your board packet, you receive the job descriptions and evaluations for these three positions that you mentioned. And blue, you see the information that was added to the job description and in red is the information that was deleted. The only change in the ISS Monitor is that we wanted to add for clarification that this position does require a minimum of sixty college hours. Because on the job description, it says bachelor's degree preferred. But it would be a requirement to have that sixty college hours, just like all our other instructional aides. Are there any questions on those three job descriptions?
Any questions from board members? Mrs. Webb? Mrs. Webb, you made it.
Which one are you referring to right now?
The ISS Monitor?
No, I don't have any questions on the ISS Monitor. But I was looking at the Pathway to Technology Early College PTEC. Because I noticed that we are deleting number thirty-four that says participate in professional development. But I think that that counselor should always participate in professional development. So I think that that's important to leave. And then the one right under it says maintain positive working relationship with other counselors. I think that we just need to have in there, maintain working relationship with other counselors and not exclude it. And the same thing with complying with the Texas Education Code of Ethics. I know it's understood or it should be implied, but it's not necessarily kept in there. Those are the only three things that I have as far as that's concerned with counseling. And then on the on the Del Rio Care's Program Coordinator, on the general duties and number one, it says coordinates the implementation of the Del Rio Care's Program. But we're just coordinating the program, which is fine. But then when we get to program management, it says, oh, it was deleted. Conduct orientation, updates and training for administration and staff. I feel that it should stay as conducts orientation, training of the Del Rio Care's Program to campus staff as needed. Because if the staff is not aware of what the needs are, how are they going to be getting information if the coordinator is not presenting that, if it's taken out? And then on the number seven or or twelve, I guess, because now it's twelve in blue, it says seeks professional development, but it doesn't ask them to attend. They just look for it. They're seeking it, but they're not themselves attending. So to me, it should say seeks and attends professional development. Those are the only things I have.
Would that be a common statement to include in all job descriptions that they attend staff development? I don't know if they vary.
Usually we do. I'm trying to see here where something else that pertains to that was added because I remember seeing something.
If that's the case, Mrs. Webb, if we revise it to include attend staff development? Because normally, all the employees do anyway.
Yeah.
Make that correction.
Mr. Mesa, all of the recommendations that Ms. about the web indicated are very easily done and none of them change the substantive role that's described. With the exception of presenting to the staff, usually the coordinator presents it to the administrators or the counselors and then they in turn turn around and flip it to the staff. So it can all be done in a timely manner. But even that, it doesn't really change the dynamics of the job. So we can very easily incorporate everything that Ms. Webb indicated. It doesn't change the scope of the work and clarify, if further clarifies it, so our recommendation will be to include Ms. Webb's notations and move forward accordingly.
Would that suffice, Mrs. Webb?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If we can do that. Would you read the recommendation then?
Sure. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the employee job description and evaluations form and include Ms. Webb's recommendations.
Heard the recommendation from administration. Is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mrs. Webb, seconded by Ms. Thorofelt. Mrs. Gonzalez, in favor, Mrs. Webb? In favor, Amy Haines? In favor, Ms. Thorofelt? In favor, myself? Motion passes unanimously. Next item that we have is 14C, consideration to approve updates to the 2020-2021 District Compensation Plans. Are there, Garcia?
Yes, good evening again. On the job description under the Auxiliary Compensation Pay Plan, we have the mechanic helper listed as a pay grade three. This, we had a vacancy for this position since February and we had not been able to fill this position. We do have a bus driver that is qualified for this position, but the bus driver is pay grade four. So we wanted to move this, or recommended to the board to move this position to a pay grade four and then move any other individuals that are under that same pay grade, under three to four as well. So it would just be moving the mechanic helper from pay grade three to pay grade four.
Questions from board members? I think as it is, we're having trouble finding mechanics and assistants. And so for him to go from a bus driver to an assistant mechanic, he would have to lose pay.
We don't want that.
Dr. Rios?
Mr. Rios, just so it's clear that we're not doing it for any one particular individual. The mechanic helper has to have a CDL license. So they have to be able to drive the bus around and make sure that it functions appropriately. And when we bring a bus driver into this position, not only would they give up pay, they would also give up the weekend routes that make them additional money. Now granted, right now, there's not too many of those going on, but in a normal setting, it would. So after evaluating, it's only fair that we So after evaluating, it's only fair that, that we, um, that we recommend those changes.
Any questions from board members? I think everyone understands. Recommendation, please?
Yes, sir. It is a recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve updates to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one district compensation plans as presented.
You've heard the recommendation from administration. I will entertain a motion for approval. Motion made by Mr. Orfelt. Is there a second to the motion? Amy Haines, all those in favor? Ms. Gonzalez? In favor? Mrs. Webb? In favor? Amy Haines, in favor? Mr. Orfelt, in favor? And myself. Motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will go into closed session permitted by sections five-five-one-point-zero-seven-one, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-two, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-three, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-four, five-five-one-point-zero-seven-six, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-two, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-four, five-five-one-point-zero-eight-seven of the Government Code, Texas Open Meetings Act. If a final vote is required, it will be taken upon reconvening into open session. The time is ten fourteen PM. We're now in executive session.
We're going to reconvening to open session, the time is 10:51. No action was taken in executive session. We're down to item 18A, consideration to approve the personnel report to include the following: New hires, district vacancies, retirements, resignations, A.D. Garcia.
You'll have to wait a second for her, Mr. Mesa.
Okay.
So she's on her way, we'll give her a second, okay?
We're ready for you and me. We're ready for you, Amy.
Okay, what item are we on, I'm sorry?
Eighteen A, consideration to approve the personnel report to include the following: New hires, district vacancies, retirements and resignations.
Okay, good evening again, President Mesa, Dr. Rios, members of the board. It is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Lisa Johansson as an environmental science teacher for Del Rio High School.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mrs. Webb, is there a second to the motion? Mr. Overfelt, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez, in favor, myself in favor, Mrs. Webb, in favor, Amy Haynes, in favor, Mr. Overfelt, motion is approved. Go on to item eighteen B, consideration to approve salary adjustments, is discussed in closed session, Edede Garcia.
Yes, sir, it is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve the salary adjustments as discussed in closed session.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mrs. Webb, seconded by Amy Haynes, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez, in favor, myself in favor, Mrs. Webb, in favor, Amy Haynes, in favor, Mr. Overfelt. Motion is approved. Item eighteen C, consideration to approve the position of Employee Benefits and Support Service Coordinator for the Human Resources Department, Edede Garcia.
Yes, sir, it is the recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Rachel Garcia as the Employee Benefits and Support Services Coordinator.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Overfelt, is there a second to the motion? Amy Haynes, Ms. Gonzalez, in favor, myself in favor, Mrs. Webb, in favor, Amy Haynes, in favor, Mr. Overfelt, motion is approved. Item eighteen D, consideration to approve the position of Health Service Coordinator, Edede Garcia.
It is a recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Melissa Fabiáldimon as the Health Services Coordinator.
You've heard the recommendation from administration, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Mr. Overfelt, seconded by Ms. Gonzalez, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez, in favor, myself in favor, Mrs. Webb, in favor, Amy Haynes, in favor, Mr. Overfelt, in favor. Thank you, motion is approved. Item eighteen E, consideration to approve the position of Counselor for Del Rio High School, Edede Garcia.
It is a recommendation of administration that the Board of Trustees approve Julia Aldrethe as Counselor for Del Rio High School.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion for approval? Motion made by Ms. Gonzalez, is there a second to the motion? Mrs. Webb, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez in favor, myself in favor, Mrs. Webb, in favor, Amy Haynes, in favor, Mr. Overfelt, in favor, motion is approved. There being no other items on the agenda, is there a motion for adjournment? Mr. Overfelt, seconded by Amy Haynes, all those in favor, Ms. Gonzalez, myself in favor, Mrs. Webb, Amy Haynes, everyone's in favor, good night everyone, thank you again for being here. Good night.